Well, good morning. Welcome to the February 21st, 2017 Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing meeting. And today I'd like to have my Dr. Reverend Michael Lewis from the Roswell Street Baptist Church lead us in vacation.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here today, honored to pray, and understand that we have a 300-page agenda today, so we definitely stand in need of prayer. Let's join our hearts together in prayer. Father in heaven, we're so thankful that we could humble our hearts at the beginning of this new day, and we humbly confess with assomeness that this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we come in thanksgiving for this community and this county of Cobb County that we live in here in Georgia, and we thank you, Lord, for the residents. We thank you, Lord, for these, our commissioners, our leaders. And, Lord, we come today just humbly asking for your wisdom and your direction. We pray that the light of your presence would be felt and that your spirit would guide each decision that would be made here. Thank you, Lord, for each one that is here. We pray your blessing upon each home. And, Lord, we agree touching Jeremiah 29, verse 7, where you said, "Pray for the welfare of the city; for as the city prospers, so will the people prosper." And, Father, that is our humble prayer today, that you would bless, that you would prosper, that you would shine your face upon us. And, Lord, we humbly submit this prayer before you with respect to people from all religions and all backgrounds. In the name of Jesus, we ask, amen.
Amen. And Officer Duncan from the Selected Traffic Enforcement Unit will lead us in the presence of allegiance. Officer Duncan?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the hearing today, I'd like to ask for a moment of prayer and silence as we honor the name of Jim Pearson, who passed away yesterday after a heroic struggle with cancer. Jim was a model, public servant in many, many different ways. His Christian values was reflected in his work. As the finance director, you could not have found a person who had a bigger passion and interest than the interest of Cobb County citizens than Jim. So I'd like us just for a moment to bow our heads and in our own way, lift him up. Amen. So I'm gonna have John Peterson take it from here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then after, we're gonna call for any opposition to signify that they're here also, so that they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so that they could present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue or case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're gonna talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't wanna cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. After that, the board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the case at hand. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn and not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z68 of 2016, CalAtlantic Group, Inc. That case was withdrawn without prejudice, would not be heard today. Resoning case Z82 of 2016, Golden Anchor Bolt Storage, LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Resoning case Z115 of 2016, Brooks Chabot Capital, LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice, would not be heard today. Resoning case Z4 of 2017, Marietta Ice, LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice, would not be heard today. SLEP1 of 2017, Marietta Ice, LLC. This special land use permit was withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Lastly, OSC17-01, Benchmark Contractors Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Additionally, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard either. Resoning case Z18 of 2016, Pope Atlanta Enterprises. That case has been continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z18 of 2016 will not be heard today. Z35 of 2016, Adventure Living, LLC. That case was continued by staff until the lawsuit is settled, so Z35 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z93 of 2016, Kaplan Morgan Binings Development, LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the March 21st, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z93 of 2016 will not be heard today. Z97 of 2016, Royal Residential Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z97 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z101 of 2016, Province Homes, LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 18th, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z101 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z111 of 2016, RSDC1 LLC. That case was continued by staff, or excuse me, was continued by the Planning Commission until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z111 of 2016 will not be heard today. Z112 of 2016, Duncan Land Investments, LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z112 of 2016 will not be heard today. Z113, 2016 Habitat Humanity of Northwest Metro Atlanta Incorporated was continued by the staff, or excuse me, was continued by the Planning Commission until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z113 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z114 of 2016, Cap Key Real Estate Advisors. That case was held by the Planning Commission until the March 7th, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z114, 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z116 of 2016, St. Clair Holdings, LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the March 21st, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z116 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z119 of 2016, Mayweather Enterprises, was continued by the staff until the March 21st, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z119 of 2016 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z5 of 2017, Joshua Powell, Sr., and Lauren Powell. That case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z5 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z7 of 2017, Pollock Shores Real Estate Group, LLC. That case was held by the Planning Commission until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z7 will not be heard today. LEP2 of 2017, Living Hope Lutheran Church. That case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LEP2 would not be heard today. OSC1702, WNH Investments, LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so OSC17-02 would not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's agenda in which the applicant has asked for a continuance a few minutes ago. Resoning case Z117 of 2016, Hicks Business Enterprises, LLC. Mr. Chairman, Board, the applicant is present, and they do wish to continue this case until your zoning hearing in March.
Mr. Weatherford? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I move that we continue case Z117 to our March zoning hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you. There is one case on today's consent agenda. Is the applicant here for Z1 of 2017, Jackie Payne? Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you be willing to continue this case for one month? There's some issues that have come up that we need to get worked out before the board can make a decision.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna continue it to the March hearing date, and that'd be March 21st.
Yeah. Very good.
Who's district is that in? Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I move that we continue case Z1 until the March hearing date, and you and I can touch base.
Second.
Any discussions? Call a question. The pass is five to zero.
Thank you. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please put it on silent mode. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cell phone, please put it in silent mode. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if, within two years immediately preceding the filing of a resoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is on the table in the back of the room. Additionally, I do have one announcement for our zoning attorneys and our civic groups that are out there, and anyone who's interested in zoning cases. From this point forward, any stipulation letters or comments that are received after the Wednesday deadline last week for this hearing, all copies must be emailed to all the elected officials, all the commission assistants, and all the county staffs, so, you know, our comments can be incorporated into whatever the letter may say. And from now on, that's gonna be our policy, so we're gonna have to follow it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Chairman, the first case on consent was Z1, and we continued that. Case Z2, is the applicant here for Z2? Okay, we're gonna pull that off consent. There are some things we need to hear, so just hang on and sit tight, and we'll call you in your normal order. So we're gonna pull Z2 off consent. Resoning case Z8, Race Track Petroleum, Incorporated. Request rezoning from NRC with stipulations to NRC with stipulations for the purpose of convenience market with fuel sales in Land Lot 9, 10, and the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of Z8 to the NRC District with stipulations, subject to the following conditions. Letter from Mr. Parks F. Huff dated, and we have a new letter on that dated February 17th, 2017, including site plan and renderings with the following changes. Item A, add to number six, revised to read current federal, state, and county environmental standards. B, add to number eight, add to the end, no other outdoor storage will be allowed. C, add to number nine to the end, final landscape plans be approved by the county arborist and the district commissioner. D, item number 12, add to the end, proposal and the request for dual monument signs must be addressed during plan review. District commissioner should have the final approval over signage. Variants, as mentioned in the zoning comments, fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the owner, developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z8? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Hey, John. Does somebody, Parks, could you come up?
And did all the commissioners get a copy of the February 17th letter? Just wanna make sure about that.
Did you send the letter to everyone?
Yeah, it was sent to everyone.
All right, let's talk about, I just wanna do for the record, you know, I've talked about the five, up to five feet, so could you explain to the board, and I know you've talked to DOT about that, I just wanna make sure. I see a head knot over there from Ashley. So let's just make sure that the record reflects what the five feet is about.
Yes, the original DOT recommendation was 50 feet from the center line, and we looked at the issues related to that roadway, and that would vary along the road frontage and would be up to 10 feet, and so we offered to donate up to five feet right away, discuss that with DOT, and DOT is okay with, and the way I wrote it was up to five feet to be determined at plan review, so if there's some minor tweaks that need to be done there for the entire length of Old Canton.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure that for the record that the course get that the DOT comment is different than what has been agreed to, so it's up to a maximum of five feet, and that's in the letter. Right. Right away on Old Canton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving in the land use permits on the consent agenda. LEP number one, Shiloh Hills Christian School. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of an educational program for 3- and 4-year-olds in Land Lots 210 and 211 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Hawkins Door Road, east of Bell's Ferry Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of lot 1 for 24 months, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on November 21st, 2016. Fire department comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP1? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. Other business item number one is to consider granting an express exception for a reduction in lot size as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from the January 11th, 2017 variance hearing regarding variance application V5, Amanda Farde. Staff recommends approval, subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from January 11th, 2017. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number one? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number two is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Word of Faith International Christian Center regarding rezoning application Z94 of 2003. The property is located on the southern end of Traymore Point Parkway, south of the East-West Connector, in Land Lot 916 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the site plan received January 13th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Architecture renderings contained in the other business packet with the district commissioner approving the final architectural plans, Cobb DOT comments, stormwater management comments, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number two?
Commissioner Cupid has a comment.
Yes, a comment with respect to this. I just want to clarify, I do attend Word of Faith Family Cathedral, not to be confused with Word of Faith International Christian Center, in case anybody wonders why I'm not recusing myself from this item.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other business item number five is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Mr. Jeffrey S. Brown regarding rezoning application number 321 of 1985. The property is located on the south side of East Pymont Road and on the east side of Sandy Plains Road in Land Lot 629 and 630 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the site plan received January 13th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number five?
And Commissioner Burrow has a comment.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. I just wanna make sure that the applicant is aware of our code for dumpster service. It has to be after 7:00 a.m. and before 11:00 p.m. anywhere in Cobb County, and we have had some complaints in that area from that, in that shopping center. So I just want you to be aware of that and make sure you stay in compliance with that. Thank you.
Okay, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cupid?
Yes, Chairman, I would like to add another business item to the consent agenda, which a matter was cleared up with the applicant prior to this meeting. This other business item is other business item number four.
Okay. Second. Let me read it for the record. Other business item number four is to consider amending the stipulations for 5441 Rough Snow LTD and Hilltop TIC LP regarding rezoning application Z11 of 2016 for property located at the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway, Pal Drive, in Land Lot 34 of the 18th District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number four? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and the conditions?
Yes, I appreciate that. Do you mind approaching just, I wanna ensure that we have agreement on the conditions, so the board is assured of that.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Lauren Hansford with the Galloway Law Group, 3500 Lenox Road, Atlanta.
Yes, thank you. Per our communication, I would like to move this item forward, subject to the stipulation letter that was sent on February 15th with the limited uses.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, subject to the email correspondence that you and I had just last night with respect to the shed at the back of the property.
Yes.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, the applicant is in agreement with that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to make a motion on it. Do you want me to read the conditions in since I'm not gonna move on it separately? Okay.
The stipulation letter on February 15th stipulates that the final site plan is to be submitted to the zoning division within 30 days with final approval by the district commissioner. The applicant respectfully requests the deletion of conditions 2 and 2A from the previous zoning of the property on July 19th, 2016, which is case Z11. In lieu of these previous conditions, a new condition specifying certain prohibited uses shall be provided. Specifically, the following uses shall be prohibited on the property. Liquor stores, adult entertainment, pawn shops and title pawn shops, wholesale-only businesses, tattoo parlors, check cashing, vehicle sales, parts, or service, art frame retail sales, gun, knife, or weapon sales, thrift stores, secondhand stores, or flea markets, and used tire stores. The remaining conditions from Z11, number 3 through 23, are acceptable to the applicant. However, the applicant note that the condition number 16 from Z11 is no longer applicable since the applicants do not intend to have a freestanding climate-controlled self-storage facility on the property. An additional stipulation which is to be added is that the shed to the rear of the residentially zoned property is to meet county standards as structurally sound, as a structurally sound building, excuse me, or to be torn down within six months of the approval of the application. Those are the conditions.
Okay, we'll add that one to consent, and with that, Mr. Chairman, back to the board.
So I have. So I move the, to accept the consent agenda as read, with the exception of Z2. I have a second. Any discussion?
Z1.
Oh, we pulled them both?
We pulled Z2.
All right, so I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as read, with the exception of pulling Z1 to be continued, and Z2 is moved to the regular agenda, and the addition of other business four. Do you have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you. All those folks that were on consent, your business is done. You may leave. Moving into the continued cases, rezoning case.
Or they can stay.
May I leave?
Please, don't leave. Just kidding, John.
All right, moving into the continued cases, rezoning case Z86 of 2016, Windsong Properties, LLC. Request rezoning from R30 to RSL for the purpose of residential senior living non-supportive in Land Lot 201 of the 20th District. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Stylesborough Road and MacDobbs Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z86? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the law firm of Sam's Larkin Huff and Valley, and I represent Windsong Properties in relation to this rezoning application before you this morning. It's at the intersection of, signalized intersection of MacDobbs Road and Stylesborough Road, and the most important thing that I can say this morning is to recognize that no one is here in opposition. We've worked diligently with the community and the community groups in the area and have agreements with the surrounding property owners that is encompassed in my letter dated February 17th that details the buffers and such that we've agreed to. The property, as I said, is on Arturo Road, Stylesborough Road. The proposed zoning is for an RSL community developed by Windsong, which I think many of you are familiar with them and their product. They have a similar development just west of the subject property called Serenade, and this would be a second phase to that, if you will. And partly because of the success of that community and the acceptance by the community of that product, that is why we don't have opposition today. And so the site plan that's before you today is been reduced from the original proposal. If I can go through the slide here, the, yeah, the number of homes is 46 homes on 18 acres, which is a density of 2.49 units per acre. With that density, we're in compliance with staff recommendation for approval. We also come to before you with a unanimous Planning Commission recommendation for approval. Over 25% of the site, as you saw with the rendering, over 25% of the site is green space. We have a buffer on the west side of the property of 50 feet. We have a buffer on the north side of the property with agreements of those property owners of 45 feet with an additional 20, with, in that, a 25-foot landscape strip. We have a 50-foot buffer surrounding the home that's in the notch of our property at the southeastern portion of our property, which will be heavily landscaped. And you can see here the subject property and how we relate to the surrounding properties and how we buffer those communities. The traffic has always been a concern in this area of West Cobb, and we've worked with the Cobb DOT to ensure that they agree with our traffic studies, but what basically the end result of our traffic studies is that by developing this as an RSL community, age-restricted community, that we will produce significantly less traffic than if this was developed as a typical suburban residential neighborhood. And so that, you're 28% less than if this were developed as a typical suburban neighborhood. The product is, the Windsong product, and it's detailed, was in the stipulation letter, and they are tops in their market and award-winning with their product, which is very detailed towards the senior market. They have, as I said, we've got a development to the east of this, to the west of this product, project, which is selling rapidly, and every single home buyer, and one of the other questions and concerns we get often with RSL communities is, are we attracting people to move to this area from elsewhere? But every single buyer in the Serenade community lived within West Cobb area, lived within a few miles of the subject property. So the other issue is the impact on schools, and what that shows is that these people are moving from a typical suburban, single-family home into an RSL community within their own community, and then that home will be refilled or infilled with a family. So we will only have a positive impact because that will now come back on the tax rolls. The interiors are very much designed for open space, air. The interiors are very much designed for open, open space, air, light coming in. And you can see the attention to detail that they have with their product. We have, as again detailed in the letter, agreements with the surrounding property owners. This is the property owner to the southeastern portion of the property, and they would prefer that we not develop at all, but we've worked diligently with them to come up with a landscaping plan. The property to the north, and this is switched 90 degrees, but the property to the north, which is to the right on this, is an existing house. That house will remain. And so their view from behind their house is identical to where, the way it is right now. There's currently landscaping between their house and the house to the north that will remain. And to the west, we will install a berm in staggered rows of green, evergreen plantings along their western property line to totally block that view. So we think we've done our job in terms of protecting that neighbor. So it is my pleasure to represent this applicant in this case and to be able to stand before you with planning commission recommendation for approval, with the staff recommendation for approval. And with no one here in opposition, I will yield the remainder of my time to answer specific questions that you may have about the development or the details of the stipulation letter that were crafted in agreements with surrounding neighbors and, and the community. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate your consideration of this application.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, sir. Let me add my thanks to the applicant and to attorneys for working diligently to work through this. It's been a process and I am pleased with the outcome. A couple of quick questions, maybe I just wanted to reiterate. The landscaping berm along MacDobbs and Stylesborough will be similar to what is already in place at Serenade?
Yes, that is correct.
And I believe that's been, once that's built, you can barely see anything going in there. So I appreciate you doing that and that will add to the aesthetics of this development, I believe.
Yes.
And your latest stipulation letter is 217 that we discussed. And I believe that that one is the current one, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then, then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to make a motion to approve Z86, application rezoned subject property from R30 to RSL, subject stipulation letter dated 21717 from Sam's Larkin Huff and Valley, and all staff comments not otherwise in conflict with above referenced stipulation letter. Any and all stipulation revisions must be approved by district commissioner and/or his staff designate.
Second?
Second.
And I'd like to open the floor for some discussion.
Certainly.
Okay. Mr. Huff? Does anybody else have any questions before me? I was noticing your, your chart where it talked about the number of cars on the road. Was that, did that chart start with an R30 or an R20 compared to an RSL?
That is comparing it with an R20.
The property is currently zoned R30, right?
Yes, and if I can get the aerial.
Just trying to get, and where I'm getting to, excuse me, is Stylesborough, the density on Stylesborough traffic, the density on Stylesborough Road?
Yeah.
Regardless of what we put in there, there's going to be more traffic on there because whether you leave it R30 or RSL, there's still going to be additional traffic on there. I just want to make sure that we, to highlight that an R20 would bring 320 trips a day to, to Stylesborough, and an RSL would bring, I think you said, 230?
230, and significantly with that 230, and we've done traffic studies using our, our existing communities that are built out, and we've laid traffic tape. So not only is it a trip per day, but we also have broken it down in our detailed study of when those trips happen. And most importantly, the AM track trips are a tiny, tiny fraction of a typical suburban neighborhood. So it's even more dramatic when you look at the AM and PM peak traffic times, which are the most stressful.
So do you think that if it was, if we left it at R30, it would have the same traffic flow that an RSL would have? Would that be your estimate? I don't want to, I don't want to have you, you know, call you to it, but I'm going to call you to it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, and we did look at whether an R20 or R30, and one of the things we looked at was when you look at the surrounding developments in the area, everything's R20, there's an R30 across the street, but that's the church. Everything else pretty much is an R20 in the area. So we figured R20 is consistent with land use plan, is consistent with surrounding developments. But even at an R30, the RSL would, would be a fraction less than the R30 development. But we chose R20 because that, that's kind of the predominant zoning for new subdivisions in this section of West Cobb.
Okay, fine, thank you. Now let's call Ms. White.
Ashley White with the Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to have you back. Could you give me an idea of, of the, the traffic on Stylesborough Road? You know, from, let's say, from, what's the westernmost boundary of Stylesborough Road? Would that be Lost Marshill? All right. As it moves towards, Barrett, yeah, I was saying Barrett Parkway, does the LOS increase or stays about the same regardless of where it is on that road?
I don't have the traffic study in front of me, but I would assume because Barrett Parkway is a busy corridor, that the level of service would probably go down in that area. I don't have the data in front of me right now, but as you guys talked about earlier, I have a breakdown of what, how many trips per day this lot would generate if it was R30 or R20.
Sure, right, okay.
And it does generate less as being an RSL than it would with the R30 or R20.
All right, well, that's, that's important to know, all right. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think the, for me, the, I've got, obviously have a concern about increasing traffic unlimited on a, on a step, infrastructure, which is roads. But I think that what compels me in this case here to support the, the, the zoning is that the, they have worked with their neighbors to come to an understanding about both the development and the, the lot sizes. I do have some concerns about the setback because I thought the RSLs had a certain, like 15 feet between, between structures in an RSL.
They're site-dependent.
Site-dependent.
I mean, it's.
This one's going to be five feet, is that correct, Mr. Huff?
That is correct. And in the, the design feature here, if we go to the, the site plan, is we have, the, the homes are often courtyard homes.
Right.
That setback is how you create your private living space between them. And also, like, if you look along Stylesborough Road, we have, we intentionally kept the corner of Stylesborough and MacDobbs Road as tree green space. And so by having the closer setbacks, we can create the green space at the either end of that rather than spreading it out and losing the trees at that, that intersection. We think having that intersection remain as it is now is going to be an important design feature. And how these homes function with the side courtyard, the setback is, it creates that private space between these homes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes, I have a question then, Parks. Since you don't show any guest parking here, you know, I know the general rule is if it's only 10 feet between, then there's not going to be any on-street parking allowed, correct?
That is correct. We, we, we know, my client's working very well with Mr. Tolliver.
Well, you have to. It's not a choice there. We have to work with them too.
I said, "well."
The commissioner said that in a loving manner.
Of course, yes. Yeah, so I just want to point out the fact that, um, you know, I don't know, you, you want to make sure that in these garages, you know, they can't be modified for living space because they're going to need the space to park the cars and keep them off the road.
Definitely.
I have, I have no more questions. Mr. Commissioner Weatherford?
Sure, I just wanted to emphasize what you were alluding to, Mr. Chairman, in the traffic. One of the benefits I see of, of the age-restricted is intensity versus density. And an R30 home would typically imply larger homes, larger lots, and more cars, and typically children of age. And these are age-restricted, no one under 19 could be there. So typically, the morning and afternoon traffic on that road is what is usually the worst, mainly because of schools. So although there is more density, the intensity, I think, is significantly less. And I think it fits well there in that particular area.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, just have one suggestion. Commissioner Weatherford and I were talking before the meeting. In number, stipulation number three allows you to sign off if they bring another model. But in number 12, it says, "Architecture, you might just consider adding four elevations." Because I know you, you've said that there's always issue about elevations. So where it says, "Minor modification to the, within stipulations, conditions, site plan, lighting, landscaping, architecture, site features and the like, you might just say, 'Architecture' or 'Elevations.'" So then, because otherwise, if they make a minor change to the elevation, staff may not allow you to sign off on it.
You're referring to?
Number 12.
Number 12G? Or just add it to that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just reading the paragraph in 12, but those other five are just the standard that we put for minor modifications. So just in the paragraph for number 12, you might say, "Architecture or elevation."
Would you be okay with that, Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Or are there? Does Court get that? Okay.
I'll change my motion to reflect that on the stipulation letter.
With that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero.
Okay. Moving into land use permits on today's agenda. If it's okay with the board, we're going to hear LEP 29 through 33 together and just make separate motions on all of them. Thank you.
Is everybody on the board okay with that? Okay, that's good for us.
Okay. LEP 29, 2016, SM Living LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing eight residents in a group home in Land Lot 94 of the 20th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Creekwood Crossing and Shiloh Trail East. LEP 30 of 2016, SM Living LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing eight residents in a group home in Land Lot 94 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Shiloh Trail East, east of Creekwood Crossing. LEP 31 of 2016, SM Living LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing eight residents in a group home in Land Lot 94 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Shiloh Trail East, east of Creekwood Crossing. LEP 32 of 2016, SM Living LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing eight residents in a group home in Land Lot 94 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Shiloh Trail East, east of Creekwood Crossing. And LEP 33 of 2016, SM Living LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing eight residents in a group home in Land Lots 60 and 93 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Shiloh Trail East, west of Club Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to these cases? Please raise your hands. Let the director show there are 39 people here in opposition. Can I also get a show of people here who are in support? Please raise your hands. Let the director show there's five people here in support. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is Dan Silverboard, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taylor English Duma in Cobb County. I represent the applicant, Silverman Living LLC. As you're aware, Silverman Living operates five group homes on Shiloh Trail East and District 3. Silverman Living is here today to request the county provide an accommodation that will permit it to raise its occupancy to have the same number of residents which are allowed in the single-family homes in the neighborhood. This accommodation, as we will discuss, is necessary to allow Silverman Living to continue operations. I would note that Silverman Living originally applied to have eight residents in each of its homes. However, Silverman Living amended these requests by stipulation letter and only seeks to comply with the single-family home occupancy standard. The applications themselves are for temporary land use permits, but they are also requests for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. We ask that the individual applications be considered on their own merits, but for convenience sake, we are presenting them together. It is hard to explain the applications without providing you with some context. And the first context I want to talk about is the current public health crisis facing the United States, the Atlanta metropolitan region, and yes, Cobb County with respect to heroin and opioids. As you can see from this graphic, the mortality rate, the mortality rate caused by heroin has skyrocketed in the United States over the last decade. It has touched every single state in the country and every single demographic you can think of. The people most affected, of course, are the youth of our country. With respect to Atlanta, the epidemic has hit especially hard in the North Atlanta suburbs, which has seen over a 4,000% increase in heroin-related fatalities. An 11-alive investigation named the specific, specific area of the suburbs impacted, the heroin triangle. And as you can see, this area includes unincorporated Cobb County. In Cobb County, you can see here the numbers. Eight overdoses in 2010, 100 fatal overdoses in 2015. Just as troubling is the data for Narcan and naloxone doses. Narcan is the injection that's administered by paramedics, physicians, police, and others to revive those who are in the process of overdosing. In essence, these numbers represent prevented fatalities. You can see 70 in 2013, approximately 300 in 2016. To underscore the seriousness of this epidemic, the Marietta school system has placed Narcan kits in each of its schools. As I will discuss though, Silverman Living and its group homes have been an asset to the county in its fight against this epidemic. Silverman Living was founded in 2013 and is a local Cobb County business. The founders of the company are Greg Chancy and David Ruby. Both successfully recovered from their own addictions through the sober living home model and thought to give back to their community by bringing sober living homes to Cobb. The residents of the group homes are men ages 18 through 25 who are primarily from Cobb County and the surrounding area. They have become residents with the financial support of their parents. Importantly, the residents, I mean, the group homes are accredited by the Georgia Association of Recovery Residences, or GAR. In owing to stringent requirements, which, which include property standards, standards for personnel, the clinical program and administration, GAR accreditation is the gold standard in the sober living home industry. It is my understanding that Silverman Living's group homes are in fact the only GAR-accredited homes in unincorporated Cobb County. And most importantly, as I shall talk about, Silverman Living has a track record of success. These homes work. It has treated over 120 persons in a short time for substance abuse, and its, its, its program completion rate of 70% significantly exceeds the national average of 50% as reported by the National Institute of Drug Abuse. So as I mentioned, Silverman Living operates five homes in Cobb County. Of these homes, two, LEP 30 and 32, were used in the past as group homes in the neighborhood by an operator known as Hero House. Another home, LEP 29, was rented to students from Kennesaw State. Silverman Living purchased. Silverman Living purchased the homes because group homes are a permitted use in the underlying R-20 zoning district and because group homes have been part of the neighborhood for years. I would note that unlike Hero House, Silverman Living is a GAR accredited operation. As you can see from these homes, these photos, the group homes are single-family detached residences. They are nice homes. They're clean homes. They look like any other home in the neighborhood. So an issue that I've been asked to talk about is, why would you want to put a group home in a single-family neighborhood? And the fact is, is that from a medical and a therapeutic standpoint, group homes in single-family neighborhoods are incredibly uniquely effective at facilitating recovery. And this has been universally accepted by such entities as the National Institutes of Health, the Department of Justice, Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and just about every federal court decision on group homes that's been reported. To really underscore this point and to explain more about Silverman Living's own track record of success, the National Institute of Drug Abuse recommends that for an opioid recovery program of any kind to have some sort of minimal effectiveness, that a minimum 90-day length of stay is required. The average length of stay at the Silverman Living group homes is nine months, and in some cases, that's gone up to two years. But again, nine months over 90 days is remarkable. As further evidence, we have sent you the testimony of Dr. Vance Raham, who's a physician specializing in addiction medicine and who is the medical director of the Alana Recovery Center. Dr. Raham previously served on the Indiana Attorney General's Prescription Drug Abuse Task Force. And in his testimony, he confirms the effectiveness of the single-family neighborhood and the group home as an environment for facilitating recovery. Dr. Raham's letter also citing towards medical studies confirms that increasing the occupancy of the group homes only will increase the overall effectiveness of them towards recovery. Turning now to the specific program, you know, the Silverman Living group homes create a therapeutic environment for its residents, and they do this through creating a culture of sobriety. And as to this, as we have seen, the program has been highly successful. There are strict requirements that each resident in these homes must comply with. There is random drug testing up to three times a week, and that includes alcohol and drugs. You're expelled for refusing to take a test or for failing a test. There's outpatient therapy with a physician or licensed counselor, weekly group therapy meetings. There are also house meetings with the individual residents of the home to discuss their recovery, a mandatory enrollment, a 12-step program. There's 40 hours a week either working or attending school. The residents have sponsors. They're accountable. They have to report their location to staff at all times. They have nightly dinners as a family unit. There's a weekday curfew of 10 o'clock and a weekend curfew of 11:30. And each home has a live-in resident who enforces the rules 24/7. I would also note that an important component of the program is integrating the residents of the homes back into the community. And as part of that, there is a mandatory community service element, as well as career training that's offered to the residents, such as resume writing skills, job interviewing skills, and other skills that are meant to integrate these young men back into the workforce. But what's really not listed on this slide is what's really at the heart of these applications. The residents eat together, they share stories, they follow the same rules, they lean on each other for support, they act as a family. Now having described the applicant and its program, let's talk about the requested approvals. Up front, these are not requests for new group homes. The R-20 zoning ordinance specifically allows group homes as a permitted use. Four persons with a fire sprinkler system, three persons without a system. Each of the group homes is legally operating under these conditions. These are temporary land use permits for a duration of up to two years that will allow the sober living homes to have the same occupancy as that afforded to the single-family homes that live across the street, that are in the neighborhood.
Mr. Silverboard, I'll give you one more minute, okay?
Excuse me?
You have 10 minutes.
These are, we agreed to combine the five LUPs rather than give them 10 minutes apiece. And so he's going to complete his presentation, and then the opposition will be given the same amount of time as the applicant uses.
So they could each have, we can have a total of 50 minutes on each side?
If we heard them separately, that's what we would, that's what we would hear.
I apologize, I just wanted to make sure. I was going to give you the time anyhow, I just wanted to...
That's okay.
Clearly I had, I was briefed, I just misunderstood, so I apologize to you.
No problem.
Someday you'll be as old as me, I hope not.
So as I was saying, these are temporary land use permit applications that would allow Silverman Living to have the same occupancy as that afforded to single-family homes in the neighborhood. They're temporary in nature. More importantly, they constitute requests for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. And as we will discuss, the Fair Housing Act has its own specific criteria for approval, which is separate and distinct from the ordinary permit approval criteria. And because the Fair Housing Act is a federal statute with a clear federal mandate, is what ultimately governs this proceeding. So what are we asking for? What do these occupancy requests look like? You can see on this slide, the requested occupancy for each home, the occupancy is based on the single-family occupancy standard of 390 square feet of living space per adult. You can see the total square living space for each house is taken from the county assessor's website. I would note that the three-bedroom homes are the homes where we're asking for five residents, and the six and seven resident homes are where there's four bedrooms. So I just want to talk for a second about how we got to this occupancy request. As I mentioned, the original applications asked for eight persons per home. However, after talking with the planning commissioners in December, the request was lowered to two persons per bedroom. The two-person-per-bedroom standard is consistent with Fair Housing Act guidance that's issued by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Specifically in a statement of a policy, an enforcement policy known as the Keating Memo, HUD opined that, quote, "An occupancy policy of two persons in a bedroom, as a general rule, is reasonable under the Fair Housing Act." Notwithstanding, in early February, hoping again to strike a middle ground with the county and its neighbors, Silverman Living, by way of a stipulation letter, lowered this to comply with the single-family occupancy standard. And you can see how that looks on this slide. So I guess what we're saying is, we think that this occupancy request is more than reasonable. So the reasons why we're asking for the occupancy requests are pretty simple. First off, with the current heroin epidemic, Silverman Living simply needs more resources to address increased need. Second, and importantly, it has become, under the current zoning restrictions, financially infeasible for Silverman Living to continue operating. And you can see here the monthly financial data. Across all homes, Silverman Living, under its existing occupancy restrictions, is losing about $12,000 a month, or a little over $2,000 per each home. With a proposed occupancy, Silverman Living will be making a little over $3,000 a month across all homes. I would note that Silverman Living is not looking at these group homes as some sort of major profit center. It's simply looking to make a reasonable rate of return so that it can continue operating. Now, the occupancy increase, importantly, will not have any impacts on the neighborhood. The staff report confirms that with a stipulation that all cars will be parked in the garage and the driveway, the parking will not be an issue. The staff report does not cite any traffic impacts either. There will be no blight, or refuse, or trash with the accommodation. The houses are very well-maintained for the resident rules and for the GAR accreditation requirements. There will be no public safety risks. The residents are appropriately background screened as part of the application process. There's no history of violent crime or sex offenses. Again, they're under 24/7 supervision. And I would assert that any opinion to the contrary is not based on fact, but based on bias. There will also be no signage, and importantly, there will be no diminution in property values. The staff report notes that there is a potential for a decrease in property values with this occupancy request. However, this is not based on any studies or evidence to support that. It's honestly just based on a myth that is associated with group homes, a myth that has been thoroughly debunked by the American Planning Association, which in a report has stated that more than 50 studies have found that group homes do not affect the property values of even the house next door. Just to be sure, though, Silverman Living engaged a realtor in Cobb County to look at the home sale prices of homes in the area of the group homes, specifically homes within a 1.25-mile radius of all the Silverman Living group homes. And what it found was, is that the sale prices, and this would be, I think it's orange or red up on the screen, that the sale prices simply tracked the market. There's no diminution in property value. I do want to talk about the prior code enforcement history. I would say that the code enforcement history for this property, or for the Silverman Living group homes, is no indication of any impacts to the surrounding neighbors. There were two violations, which were ministerial in nature and which have been addressed. The failure to get a business license was an administrative oversight during the startup period. All of these homes now have business licenses. There was an occupancy violation. It was immediately corrected. It is in part why we are here. There have been three other complaints associated with two homes that have to do with off-street parking, or how the cars were parked in the driveways. One complaint, for example, alleged that a car was parked off the edge of a driveway. None of these complaints ever resulted in violations. But I want to note, as a whole, none of the violations involve others' quiet enjoyment of their property. There's no complaints in the file for noise, or refuse, or unkempt property, traffic, criminal activity, or unkempt, or other disruptive activity. I would assert that the Silverman Living homes have been good neighbors. And to demonstrate, I want to show you this map. The location of the group homes are shown in the red rectangles. The location of the neighbors who have consented to the occupancy increase are shown in the blue rectangles. And as you can see from this map, the majority of property owners who live next door to these group homes, who see these group homes on a day-to-day basis, are fine with the occupancy increase. I'd just like to now turn to the Fair Housing Act, which, as I mentioned, ultimately governs the outcome of these permits as they are requests for reasonable accommodation. The Act is a broad mandate to eliminate discrimination against and equalize housing opportunities for disabled individuals. It defines unlawful discrimination to include, among other things, a refusal to make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices, when such accommodations are necessary to afford disabled persons an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. This includes changes to zoning rules. And importantly, disabled persons protected under the Act include those who suffer from substance abuse addiction. There is a test for determining whether or not accommodation is a reasonable accommodation, which must be granted. It's three-pronged. Is the proposed accommodation reasonable? And two, necessary to afford disabled persons? Three, the equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling? If the answer is yes, the municipality is legally required to approve the accommodation. Turning to the first prong, reasonableness. An accommodation is reasonable if it does not cause any fiscal or administrative burdens on the municipality or undue hardship, such as requiring the county to rewrite its zoning ordinance or general plan. Or it does not cause a fundamental alteration of the zoning scheme. The 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the highest federal court in Georgia, except for the US Supreme Court, in the key case of Schwartz versus City of Treasury Allen, stated that if a proposed use is quite similar to surrounding uses that are permitted by the zoning code, it will be more difficult to show that a waiver of the rule, such as an occupancy restriction, would cause a fundamental change of the zoning scheme. Here, allowing Silverman Living to have increased residence will not undermine the basic purpose of the R-20 zoning district, which is to have locations for single-family residential uses or residentially compatible institutional uses. As I noted, group homes are already permitted in this zoning district, and thus, the zoning ordinance itself, as well as countless authorities, acknowledge that group homes are consistent with single-family uses. Again, the group homes live as a single-family unit, and even with additional residents, they would function like any other family in the neighborhood. Accordingly, permitting group homes to comply with the single-family occupancy standard, which non-disabled people are allowed to comply with in the neighborhood, will not result in a fundamental alteration to the neighborhood. An important point I want to talk about with respect to reasonableness that has come up has to do with the proximity of these homes. Again, these homes are legally in their present location. There is nothing in the zoning code which prohibits them from being exactly where they are. The concerns we heard at the planning commission primarily involve the number of homes that already exist, that there are too many of these homes. And the implication from this, the comments, is that with the reasonable accommodation with the occupancy increase, that there would be too many of these people. And the fact is, is when you say "too many" in this context, what you are saying is too many disabled people. And that is specifically the kind of exclusionary practice that the Fair Housing Act prohibits, period. And the case law in the Fair Housing Act supports this. Several cases have held that the proximity of group homes alone is not a legal basis for denying a reasonable accommodation request. As we have talked about at length, the accommodation will not result in increased impacts in the neighborhood. And then importantly, the Silverman Living group homes operate independently of each other. They have little interaction, except the occasional sharing of staff resources for administrative purposes, such as one house manager might buy groceries for his house and another house. And there are infrequent community meals amongst the residents. Mind you, this kind of activity, running errands for one another, having a community meal, if seen in other contexts, if done by a single-family homes, would simply be characterized as neighborly. And again, the residents of one house have limited interaction with the residents of another house. They're working, they're going to school, they're participating in off-site treatment on a daily basis. They have a full schedule, and again, they live as an individual family, telling stories with each other, with house rules, and using each other, the family, to complete their recovery. Thus, the opinion that the group homes would collectively overrun the single-family character of the neighborhood is factually unsupportable and arguably discriminatory. The second prong is necessity, and we can just run through this. An accommodation is deemed necessary if it provides a direct amelioration of a disability's effect or else is therapeutically meaningful, or it allows the applicant to operate its group homes profitably. As the evidence has made clear, the accommodation is absolutely necessary to allow Silverman Living to be financially viable. As we have talked about with Dr. Raham's testimony, the expansion of occupancy will only increase the effectiveness of the program. Finally, with equal opportunity, the accommodation must permit the disabled person an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling in the same way as a non-disabled person. Here, Silverman Living only wants to use its properties in the same manner as its neighbors can who live across the street, subject to the same occupancy restrictions. In concluding, the Fair Housing Act, the applications plainly meet the Fair Housing Act reasonable accommodation criteria, and the Board of Commissioners must approve them. There will be no newer increased impacts to the neighborhood. Increasing, yeah, this will only increase the county's resources for tackling the heroin epidemic. And I would just say, they make no mistake, these are the best-run group homes in the county. They are GAR accredited, they have a track record of success, and they are saving lives. And we, the community, should want to keep them going. The final thing I want to say before I turn this over is, again, to the neighbors. It's very nice that you came out again, and I'm glad we have the second chance to talk. And I would just reiterate what I said at the planning commission hearing, that this community of ours is facing a drug epidemic which is claiming its youth on a daily basis. And you only have to read the obituary section of the AJC or the Marietta Daily Journal to see that. As I have told you, these homes are effective, significantly effective, towards five As I have told you, these homes are effective, significantly effective, towards fighting this epidemic. And they are effective in large part because they are in this neighborhood, and that is to your credit. I ask you to put aside what concerns you have about these homes, and instead embrace these young men as your neighbors. And I guarantee you, Sobermen Living will work with you to address any concerns you might have. I put this up at the Planning Commission hearing, and I'm going to do it again now. This is the contact information for the Executive Director of Sobermen Living, David Ruby. David is, David, stand up. David is available morning, noon, and night to answer and help you with any concerns you might have. I would now just briefly like to have two people come up to share their own experiences
Good morning. My name is Priscilla Ragsdale, and I am a Cobb County resident. I also have been involved in healthcare in Cobb County for a number of years, over 35, most of that time spent at Wellstar Kinnis Town. My son, who is part of the Sobermen Living program, grew up in Cobb County, attended Walker, graduated from Lovett, and went to Georgetown University. Unfortunately, because of the predisposition of his two grandfathers, he inherited an addiction to alcohol. So, we were in a residential treatment program, and the recommendation came to us that we, the next step should be a sober living so he could continue learning his education and the tools that he needed in order to maintain his sobriety. And Sobermen Living was on the list of recommendations. They were also several others. And having friends in, whose children have been in various programs, I called them, got some more recommendations, got a list of Cobb County recommendations from my church, and off I went to preview and interview some of the homes. I was shocked. Most of the sober living facilities are housed in huge, large complexes, apartment complexes around the county. I could not see how there would ever be any oversight, any structure, any community whatsoever. Some of the ones on the list were so poorly run, poorly kept, overgrown grass, house managers with less than a year of sobriety. And to be perfectly honest with you, some of them, I just didn't even bother to get out and go in after I'd made the appointment, they were so scary. While my husband, I mean, while my son was in the residential treatment, he had the opportunity to meet Mr. Ruby, and he very much was impressed with that program and thought that would be a good program for his success. So, that was the program we chose. I picked him up at the Residential Recovery Center, put it in the Navigator, and off we went to the next step. And when we arrived at the address the Navigator sent us to, completely confused. We had turned into a residential neighborhood. All the houses were well-kept, the lawns were maintained, there was no signs to indicate we'd arrived at our destination. We drove on, recalculated the address, came back to the same one, and finally, with no other choice, we pulled in the driveway, got out, rang the bell. We were greeted by a young man, very clean-cut, very articulate. We explained our problem, and he told us, yes, indeed, we had arrived at Sobermen Living. I was thrilled, and just outstanding, that we were in a community and in a therapeutic environment where my son had a chance to maintain and learn more about his recovery. We went in, the young man went completely through the program with us, he went through all of the rules, the regulations, the structure that was available there. He was articulate, he was kind, generous, and very compassionate. And as I said, I was just thrilled that we had found our way to Sobermen Living. This program, the owners have been, put together a very comprehensive, organized program that almost guarantees success for the occupants. The owners are there, on site, they're available, I can call them anytime I want to, there was follow-through, they were assigned, my son was assigned a sober coach, there was constant contact. And the program has been well-thought-out from beginning to end to provide success. It's a very, very, very therapeutic environment for these young men and women that are struggling to get their lives back together, to be in a community, because this is where they grew up, this is where they came from, they don't feel like they're stuck off somewhere, you know, where nobody cares and can't interact with the population of the county. We are truly blessed that we were, actually came to this program. It is an asset to the community and to Cobb County, and it really serves as a model for what other sober living communities should look like. I know the neighbors have some concerns about it, but this program goes to great lengths to protect the anonymity of both the neighborhood and the residents that are in the program. That's a big part of the AA and part of being able to function among the community. And I know that the neighbors don't realize it, but they act as mentors for these young men and women that are in the program. They go, look out their window, and people are walking their dogs and playing with their children and cooking out in the backyard, and that's where they came from. That's how they grew up. They just went off-track for various reasons, whether it be a genetic or thinking that they can. Nobody wakes up in the morning and says, ah, good day to become addicted. Addiction chooses you, you don't choose it. I love this program and hope the Commissioners will take a good look and come with a positive outcome. Of all the programs I have looked at, been involved with, members in my community and in my group, this has got to be the top program in Cobb County. And we're just, I'm very appreciative that we have this resource here, because, as we all are aware, there is a problem with addiction, and unfortunately, it's growing every day.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Travis Gurray, and I'm a resident at Sobermen Living, where I've been for just over nine months. It should be said, for the record, that anything logistic or technical is obviously outside of my domain. I'm here as a testimony to the compassion and brotherhood that this program offers me and many others. The PowerPoint you were shown shows a number of staggering statistics that are very personal to me. I can tell you that over the past two years, I have lost 14 friends personally to that epidemic, and if that seems like an exaggeration, I would posit that that shows the gravity of the situation that we're in. I was somebody who, a year ago, was incapable of living life in any meaningful capacity. I could not make doctor's appointments, I had no opportunities to succeed in school or in work, and I was introduced to the program of Sobermen Living in the absolutely personalized, careful, and honest approach that they took to my recovery. I was given an opportunity to do a self-appraisal, to help others, and it was, it's very important to note that these 12-step programs we talk about are not self-help programs, they are help-other programs. We operate on service first, and that is why I think that SML is indispensable, not only to the recovery community, but the community as a whole. We have a number of residents who work closely with community service outlets like Mus Ministries and Humane Societies locally in Cobb County. I, myself, now am a student at Kennesaw State University, where I study psychology and plan to go into a master's program in social work. That could not have possibly been done without the diligent work of a sober coach, the counseling services I was offered as a resident, and all the countless events of brotherhood that I was afforded. You know, those people I lost to this disease were not as fortunate as I to have this, and it would be incredibly meaningful to everyone for us to be able to carry this message to more people. And my story is by no means unique. The majority of residents of Sobermen Living have turned their lives around and are able to be productive members of society, and that's really the theme that I want to hit on, is that I am a person who, without this place, would be unproductive or even harmful to my community, but now I'm a productive and asset to the community as it stands. So, from my end, this is an overwhelmingly good program and does overwhelmingly good work for the community. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I will yield a further testimony.
Is there anyone else that would like to come to the podium to speak in favor of this zoning application? Say none. Now we'll bring the opposition. Those who oppose the zoning application, I now yield the podium to you.
And that was 35 minutes, so I've set the timer for opposition to have 35 minutes.
This time, you get it right. Just one thing. You don't have to stand. I mean, you can come on up, I'm not going to, you know, if I have to add a minute or so, I think I can do that. Just once you be comfortable when you come up to the podium. So, if you want to stand, that's fine, but if you want to wait and sit down and relax, that's fine, too.
Yeah, my name is Mike Lavender. I'm the president of the Pine Tree Civic Association. I live in the neighborhood. We have been dealing with this particular situation since, I guess, maybe August, when one of our neighbors brought to our attention our security committee, that there were large numbers of individuals going from house to house in the mornings and those kind of things. So, we started researching things a little bit, and we found out that the majority of these homes are, well, all of the homes are owned by Sobermen Living, or operated by Sobermen Living, I think some released. But as was presented to you, they are looking at not only taking advantage of the already provisions that Cobb County has made for group homes, but they're also looking to increase those numbers. And if you increase those numbers, we feel like it's going to have a severe impact on the character of the neighborhood. I think it probably already has had an impact on the character of the neighborhood. We've got people that are moving, for whatever reason, that have delayed putting their houses on the market because of the signs that are up that indicate that we have group homes in the neighborhood, and large numbers of group homes in the neighborhood. So, that particular aspect of it is concerning. And basically, you've got five houses in very close proximity that all require business license, and they're pretty much turning that street into a small institutional complex for treating recovering people, people that are recovering from addiction. And I don't think anybody that's going to speak today has any problems with supporting addiction recovery, or that we're in any way speaking badly of Sobermen Living and their attempts to help young people. We just feel like that there's way too intense consolidation of individuals in the neighborhood. So, we can go on to the next slide. So, this is just a listing of the houses, and so they have the five houses that they're looking at at this point to increase the number. And we've already, as I said, Cobb County's already allowed for more than the standard to unrelated adults in a single-family dwelling. So, they've, but they've got the five houses. In addition to that, they have another house that's a little ways down the street from those five that I understand they operate. They've also got two houses that are in the city of Kennesaw on Timberlake Road, and one of those houses, 773 Timberlake Road, was purchased by Sobermen Living late in 2016, and I can't remember if it was November or December. But they've added that house that's right next door. I know the person that owned the house and the reason they sold it was because of the group home that was next door. So, while they say there's no, nothing that actually supports that, based on personal experience, we find that having group homes in the neighborhood are causing issues with the neighbors or people's desirable, you know, desirability of living in the neighborhood. And I guess the fact that they're really looking at the economics of this is they're looking at it as a business, and I look at it that way myself. I mean, you've got five homes, they share resources, they share transportation, they share the homes where I might go next door to my neighbor's house and have dinner or have, you know, a party periodically, but there's not 20 or 30 people that do it on a consistent basis. The next slide, again, this is just, it's very similar to the one, it's showing the five houses in question, and we'll have people that live next door to those and around speaking more, you know, on a personal experience basis. Going on to the next one. I went into, just into Google Maps and put in some of the addresses, and you can see from this particular map, from the house that's furthest away from the one on Ayers Road, it's only a nine-minute walk from one house to another. So, all the other houses are conglomerated in a more concise area, and it's just a very intense grouping of people. Right now, with the five houses, they have the ability to have 15 adult males in the houses, and that, to me, is not the same as having a family. If I've got a husband, wife, and three kids, is what the, you know, the code's referring to, square footage per individual and that kind of thing. But five, you know, three adult unrelated people in a house, it's not the same, quite the same as a family. So, I think that's something we need to look at. If they get the increases that they were looking at, then we, you're going to have an increase of up to 20, 29 people in a very, you know, within a block of each other. And that really doesn't speak well to the, to the nature of the neighborhood and the characteristics, the character of the neighborhood, which is one of the, I think, our primary concern at this point. If you could flip on to the next slide. I picked this slide up, or this information up, from the house that's furthest away, that's in the city of Kennesaw, and the one that's on Shiloh Trail, and it's only, it's only like a 38-minute walk. It's only a six-minute drive. So, if you start consolidating a large number of homes or houses that you're using for one particular business purpose, then you can start consolidating resources and save money. But again, this indicates to me that it's primarily a business concern, given the fact that they are, you know, treating people and I think having a success rate. But again, the economic aspect of it, to me, looks more like it's really being treated as much as a business is being helpful. They did present a slide that showed where their houses were and the people around them that had signed letters of approval of them increasing the number of people in the houses. I have a letter that I'll be glad to, I think it was emailed to the Commissioners, I think Ms. Burrell may have gotten one, or Mr. Weatherford may have gotten a copy of that letter. But they basically- But they basically said that they were unaware that there were that large number of houses in the neighborhood in that close proximity. He has recanted his support for that and is very, very much opposed to, actually to the houses being in the neighborhood, but specifically to increasing the number of people in there. So, and that's, again, pass that along. And this is just that his, his information, I haven't verified all the statements there, but I wanted to pass that along to you. If you could go on to the last one, please. And this is our, this is our primary concern. I mean, we're looking primarily at the character of our neighborhood, and it's changing from residential to a situation where it's basically a commercial district. You've got three houses almost right next to each other, one house in the middle, and it's all pretty much commercial business. I know that, I know they're treating people and that's, they're doing good work. But again, it's, it's, it's being treated as commercial. And, and I think we're going to have probably increased traffic and parking issues when you start having that number of people that are meeting there on a regular basis, a lot more frequently than, say, having a Super Bowl party periodically. They did mention they've got a 70% success rate in the houses. Well, that, to me, that translates, they have a 30% failure rate. And those, that 30% of the number of people, if you're looking at 40 people in a very consolidated area, you've got a fairly significant number of individuals that could have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I'm not saying that we've experienced that at this point, but it provides a certain amount of risk. And again, the group home definition pretty much says you're supposed to look at a, a single-family environment with, you know, a long-term stay, nine months. It's more than, than short-term disability insurance. It's less than a CD, what's considered as a long-term investment. So you have to look at, look at that. And while, while these are temporary requests for two years, at the end of those two years, those homes then would have to go back through another session like this to be re-approved. If you add these, this number of people in the homes, they're going to have to be treated or upgraded to commercial fire safety equipment. And that's, to me, if I'm, if I go into a home to look at it and I've got commercial fire extinguishers in the system, in the house, I'm not really looking at that as a residence anymore. So it's going to perpetuate the use of these homes as, as an ongoing purpose. So even though it's, like I said, for a temporary request, it's going to, I think, cause it to become more long-term. And if they've got this number of people in the neighborhood, we're going to see more, more houses, I think, being purchased and used for this purpose. And it's, I'll leave the rest of the comments to the other folks that have to deal with this every day. I don't live right next to one of the homes, but we have several people here that do. We've got a couple of people that were unable to make it this morning. One of the ladies that spoke at the planning commission had trouble with babysitter, so she's not able to make it today. But I appreciate your time and I'll turn over the floor to the folks that have to deal with this on a day-to-day basis.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Donald Gregory. I'm a professor of sociology at Reinhardt University, and I'm a direct neighbor of LUP 29. I live at 3768 Creekwood Crossing, which is the home just south there of LUP 29. And just to cut to the chase, I think the FHA rules are being used to kind of blunt us over the head. And I would like to actually make the case that we've already made reasonable accommodations as a county by actually allowing the group homes into a residential home-zoned area. Currently, you can only have two unrelated people living there. By allowing the LLC to be a group home in our neighborhood, we allow three plus a resident manager, I believe, without sprinklers, four plus a resident manager if we have sprinklers. To me, that is a reasonable accommodation already. So I'm going to take a couple of their issues. One is the argument that they have a right to ordinary use in the homes, but I would actually argue what they're asking for is extraordinary. It's unique use of the home. Nobody in the neighborhood is allowed to have eight unrelated adults, seven or six in their newest version, in their unrelated, in their home. Families often mean long-term. By design, this is a churning sense of people here that are going over, by their estimates, nine months on average. I think most of us try to establish families that will last at least longer than the gestation period of one of our children. And I think when we're saying that they benefit from living in a residential community, but then at the same time, the same expert says, but they need more people in that residential home, at what point does the home end and stop the benefit of a small group home living space and become an institution where you just have a lot of people living together, surrounded by people that are trying to live their lives in our, in the zoning that we currently have? It also has changed the neighborhood. We had two homes for over a decade, and that was pushing us. I think our neighborhood has done a great job for us citizens of Cobb County. If we really need to address this issue, and we do, this is, cannot be a burden that one small little neighborhood and corner takes for the entire county. When we had the two hero homes, it was enough. We actually had a lot of churning already. We were already dealing with college students. It was all we could do to maintain our neighborhood-ness. To be a neighborhood means some kind of permanency. It means that you get to know your neighbors. It means that you see them walking dogs. You see them out washing the car. You see their children getting on the bus. If there's a problem with your neighbor, you address the neighbor who you've made a relationship with. In this case, I haven't called in and cited anything. I will if I need to in the future, if we want that burden, but I don't have a neighbor next door that I have a long-term relationship with that I can say, hey, one of your residents are out there whistling at my dog every time I let her out to go to the bathroom to make her bark. Or you guys need to stop parking on my yard, on next to the driveway. There's no neighborhood there. There's no permanency by design. So I don't think that this is actually a call for reasonable accommodation. It's not ordinary. It's not family. And I don't believe we're being discriminatory at all. These could be density for nuns, Nobel laureates, I don't care. This many adults in this neighborhood, regardless of who they are, is too intense. It's too much burden on the infrastructure in our neighborhood. And because we have adults living in such intensity that are by design temporary, I think it actually breaks down the community bonds of where you're trying to build a neighborhood with safety and where you look out for each other. Before, they had mentioned that each of these were a home, but you can see that there are many homes here that they're actually asking about. I'd also want to point out, LUP 29 was not rented to students recently. The previous renters were actually a family. It was the three people. Their son went to Kennesaw State. We have had students in the neighborhood before, as you guys are surely aware of hearing of us before. And when we had that many students living in the house before, we came back to the county and said, this is in violation, please get them out of there. Because once you start getting that people, you start getting the cars. I'd also claim that this does not look like other houses. The houses they occupy no longer look like the other houses. For example, the house next door to me, their main door now is no longer the front door, it is the back door. The back door is the one that faces those other three yellow properties. They're constantly going in and out of the back door to visit the other properties for meetings, for updates, for community stuff. So in fact, it isn't occupied like a regular house. We actually can't even enjoy our property sometimes. A lot of these gentlemen smoke, and I think they smoke a lot. And I know they smoke a lot. There's a deck right next to our house, and sometimes there'll be five or six of them on the deck smoking. And we are sitting outside, my wife and I, we're driven inside the house because of the intensity of the smoking. Our previous renters were all three smokers. We never had a problem with that. But because of the design of the sober men living, they sometimes hang out in groups for support perhaps. But this means that they are large groups that are actually denying us the use of our So I don't believe it's reasonable. I can't talk to necessary. I don't have their financial numbers in front of me. I don't know how they're operating their LLC. But it does seem that as a business, it operates differently than we would if it were a nonprofit, perhaps, where we'd have different grants, where we might be able to support this for all residents in the county. So I think of the two parts that it definitely fails is this is not reasonable. It's asking for something that's extraordinary, and this does not allow them equal opportunity to enjoy the property. It's asking them to do something that is much more than what we all get to do and limits the rest of us. So in closing, I'd like to say that unlike the presentation, that interaction between the houses are not limited to just within the house. They are constantly going back and forth. It is factually accurate to say that they're overrunning our community. I live right next door to it, and I see men walking all the time. I can talk about other nuisances, but it's a fact that these houses are actually overrunning. We've had people sometimes standing in front of our house at night, talking on the cell phone, arguing with somebody. And so you get up out of your bed to say, what's going on outside on the road? There's somebody yelling. And it's a guy on his phone. I don't know if it's with his girlfriend, his mom, I have no idea. But this happens somewhat frequently. If this were a neighborhood, I would approach my neighbor first and foremost and say, come on, listen, it was like 12:00 midnight and you were outside yelling on your phone, we're trying to go to sleep. They would probably listen. Here, by design, we're constantly going to have new people coming in and out. We won't be able to build that. So I do not believe that this meets the FHA reasonable accommodation criteria. I think we already have met that in Cobb County by allowing the group homes into our residential areas. And while that is the particular issue we're looking at today, I actually ask that you look at our zoning ordinance's laws and ask how we allowed this many houses actually to come into our neighborhood through a loophole, quite honestly. We had two, we managed two. We have five, it's changed our neighborhood. And I'm just asking you, please, don't outallow an increase in the number of these residents so it increases the intensity. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is James Ammonet, and I live right next door to number LUP 31. And I want to say, I did not approve anything. They got my house up there's approval. I've been against this forever. So that was not true. Also, I'd just like to say, we'd like to have our neighborhood back. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Dr. Susan Hopkins. I have a PhD in social work with a specialty in substance abuse and dual diagnosis. So I have a little bit of over 20, 25 years of experience in the field. I'm a little confused about some of the things that were presented, as I was last time, considering that the applicant started with statistics and stories about heroin addiction epidemic in Cobb County. I kind of feel like it's a scare tactic that it's implying that our neighborhood is being overrun with crazed heroin addiction people, but sober living is taking care of them all. I would like to know if that is true, how many people that have been treated there have had a heroin addiction? Have they been successful? How many failures? As this keeps being presented to us. The other statement about the 70% versus 50% success rate, as a researcher, my question is, how are those two defined? Is the 70% being defined the same as the 50%? Based on the National Institute of Alcohol Abuse and Alcoholism, the one-year marker for success or sobriety is at about 34.9%. Traditionally, drug addiction is even lower than that. The just administration, administrative violations. I know that y'all and many of us work in an administrative world, and I don't think that we can sort of just count those violations as being, you know, just violations. I think failure to obtain a business license is pretty serious. And that there have not been any complaints. I think there have been a lot of informal complaints. For example, my husband and I keep talking about the house beside the professor here who keep their trash cans in the street all the time, not by the house, not in the driveway, in the street. It's a little problem coming through there. I have to confess, I don't cook. That means that we go to a lot of restaurants, sometimes two or three of the same in a week. I don't think that makes us a family. It's been mentioned so many times that they are a family unit because they cook and eat dinner together. I don't think that's true. Again, how, what are the benefits to our neighborhood that they have provided? I haven't heard anything about other than heroin addicts and keeping Cobb County free from that. How have they preserved the character of the neighborhood? I'm not sure about that either. Words have been tossed around and played around with, is it a halfway house? Is it a group home? In doing research, I did find one page that describes sober men living as a treatment center, drug treatment center in Georgia, which is very different from a group home. And again, I agree that this is a business. It's not solely about altruistic endeavors. It's about making money. And the bottom line, I think, is about however people benefit, and it's wonderful for people to be in recovery and be going to school. The bottom line is, it's about zoning codes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Timothy Brown. I live at 1362 Shiloh Trail East. I own the home at 1350 Shiloh Trail East and the home at 1374 at Shiloh Trail East. I won't take but just a moment, and you're going to have to bear with me a little bit. I've had eye surgery less than a week ago. But language is important. Whoever owns a language wins the argument. We keep talking about group homes. This is really group housing. A home is slightly different because, as been pointed out before, there's such a rotation. Even though these young men, and it's men, it's not, it's not mothers and fathers and families as we traditionally know them, they come in and rotate in and out on a regular basis. It's not like all of them come in, live there for nine months, and all move out. It's just a constant rotation. In a span of approximately 1,500 square feet, we're looking at five group homes, houses that we know of. That's a lot of density and intensity, because in that 1,500 square feet, if you take both sides of the road, that's 30 houses, and now we have five that we know of. I think it was pointed out, there's about eight in a larger area there. You know, that's 15% of the, more than 15% of the area. One thing that was just mentioned, we have a 70%, I believe probably a completion rate. We don't know what the recidivism rate is of that. We're all about, there's addiction problems in this country, and I think that it's noble that we look to our communities to try to help reduce this addiction. I just don't agree with burying it all into one small neighborhood. And I, if, I just ask each one of you, would you want this kind of intensity in your own neighborhoods? It's a lot. That's a lot in a very small area. I don't know what the P and L is like for sober men living, but if, if they lease these, charge these young men $750 a person, if there's four of them, that's $3,000 a month. Five's $4,500, six, $5,250. Man, if I could get half that for the houses that I have there, I'd be excited. But I wouldn't be excited if it was at the expense of the neighborhood. I don't, I don't lease those houses to make money. I lease those houses because I love the neighborhood. I've lived there for 20-plus years. I've lived there for 20-plus years. And I would just refer back to the old Cat Stevens songs, "Where did all the children go?" When you have this many strange men, and they're strangers because they keep rotating, they change all the time, walking your streets, it's not very comfortable for children, you know, those of us that have children and grandchildren in the neighborhood. We don't really want that for our neighborhood. We want to see our neighbors and kids out, walking the dogs, enjoying the neighborhood. This creates a sense of fear within the neighborhood. And I'm not scared much of anything. But I really don't want this for my wife and kids or grandkids. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Terrell. I live at 1382 Stonehenge Court, which is a subdivision right next, we're in the cul-de-sac right next to the homes in question. We've lived there since 1980. We've seen a lot of changes in Pine Tree, particularly with the college coming in. We've seen a lot of different things happen. As I mentioned before, there have been two hero homes in our neighborhood for a long, long time. We've been very accommodating to that. And this entire question today is not about disallowing these group homes to exist. We're asking those group homes to exist in compliance with county code as neighbors. And there's nothing about expanding this to allow accommodation for more adults than the county code permits. In the prior testimony they gave at the previous hearing, they readily admitted that they operated these homes together for economic reasons. They now come here today and said they do not do that, because they realize that's a mistake. The county code does not permit that. These homes must operate independently, and they're not being operated independently. All we're really asking for is the county to say, yes, we understand, we're making an accommodation. These are the rules of accommodation. We ask you to abide by those and not make a situation we currently have into a much worse situation. The vehicle situation is becoming almost untenable with four adults in a home and four vehicles. You go to six or seven vehicles, there's no way they can accommodate that on the homes as they currently exist. We do know, and we do understand and appreciate the fact, that group homes can be uniquely effective, as they pointed out. They have no evidence that expanding these to residential institutional facilities with multiple operating people, with the constant flow of people in and out, is going to provide a better environment for these people they're trying to accommodate. So all we're asking for is the county to look at this, decide whether this density of group homes is even appropriate, and also decide at what level these group homes are going to be allowed to operate effectively for the benefit of the people involved. Not just us, not just the residents, but the people involved with the treatment. So that's basically what we want to bring out today and ask that the commission look at those things, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robert Devier. I live at 1314 Shiloh Trail East. That's right next door to one of the group houses. And I would like to say that the way that the houses came into the neighborhood at the very beginning was never above board. This has nothing to do, of course, with sober men living. This is the way hero homes came in. And it was, the house next door to me was bought, and I met the people, and it was as if they were just going to be owners, community, neighbors, just like everyone else at that time. And it was only afterwards that we found out that it was actually an enterprise, an LLC. And we had no evidence or any kind of forewarning of any other kinds of acquisitions. And so there were two homes, and then a third home, and then leased homes, and then more bought homes. And when David Ruby and his partner came asking for support, I was not aware of the amount of homes. But the first thing, literally, literally, that David Ruby's partner said to me was, oh, we're buying homes. We'll buy your home. I hadn't even said two words to the man. And so even though it isn't the issue here, I would like to put on record that, from my experience, sober men living is intensely interested in buying homes that anybody will sell, and even recruiting people to sell within our community. And that's disturbing to me. I also have had slight complaints, and I agree with my community neighbors here when they say, you don't go and knock on the door when someone is playing basketball at midnight, and you can hear the reverberations in your home. And I feel sorry for my neighbors. And so I actually then called, again, this was in the past, but I had to call the owners of the LLC. Also, in sober men living, when they were here, kids, we don't have fences, and so they don't recognize the boundaries across the backyards. And they come into the backyard, our backyard, and they're talking on their cellphones. And so I go out, you know, just to maybe give an informal signal, nonverbal, you're in my yard. But the person doesn't, you know, acknowledge me at all and continues to talk. And then when the person is finished, goes, and maybe he was looking for privacy or something like this, but his privacy is in my space. And so it's, again, no one is saying anything about recovery and the need for recovery. This is about a sense of, this is about a sense of community and intensity and density. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. That's the time allocated for both support and opposition to the zoning, so I'll yield the floor to Commissioner Burrow.
Well, first of all, we have received several testimonials in support of sober men living and how it has helped them individually or members of their families. And I don't think we, I think we're in agreement that they're providing valuable service for those at risk and working to ensure those in recovery go on to lead a better life. We have received very positive comments on that front, and thank you for providing the support and the help needed for those battling this problem. However, today, we're here to decide whether sober men living should be allowed to expand their current operations in five existing neighborhood homes in the Pine Tree community. The reason this is before us today is because of code violations, code enforcement violations. And initially, it's my understanding that a business license has now been issued. Originally, they were operating without a business license, and they have satisfied that criteria under our code. And for the five homes that are under consideration. As far as single-family home versus group home, Cobb County does allow group home usage in the R20 zoning category, specified criteria, which are, single-family home is defined as being occupied by a family or two unrelated adults. Group home is allowed for up to three residents or four with fire code being met. And so the code allows for additional unrelated persons in a group home compared to a single-family home. The group home is defined as a dwelling unit shared by four or fewer persons excluding resident staff who live together as a single-house community unit in a long-term, family-like environment. If Mr. Silverboard could come up, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. It's my understanding now that when code enforcement came out, and there were more than the three unrelated living in the homes, that you're now in compliance with three in each of the five homes?
Three residents plus staff.
Plus staff, right.
Yes.
Okay. And in order to have four, you would have to comply with the fire code and
Yes.
add sprinklers.
Correct.
But that probably won't happen until what's decided today.
Yeah, I mean, in large part, the cost of a fire sprinkler system, I believe, is around $8,000 per home. So we would like to have certainty about this decision before we decide to move forward with that.
Okay. And then also, I think one of the speakers mentioned our code does not allow for shared resources, and you have people going between houses or sharing resources, cooking meals, laundry, things like that, shared resources?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Well, I guess the first thing I would say is, is I'm not aware of a code requirement which prohibits shared resources, so that might be interesting to know about. But again, we just state with what I originally said in my presentation, which is that each of the group homes operates independently. They are self-sustaining units. Occasionally, house managers will help out another house manager with errands. And then occasionally, there's community dinners amongst the residents of the homes. But aside from that, I'm not aware of consistently shared resources.
Well, they are required to operate independently.
Okay.
A single-family home.
Right. And like I said, the facts are that they do operate independently. The kids are busy on a day-to-day basis, 40 hours a week. They're in treatment. They operate as a family. They have dinners together. They're not running around the neighborhood. There's not a consistent, there's not a consistent amount of shared administrative It is an issue where the house manager, like I said, will help another house manager from time to time with an errand.
So do you have a staff person or manager for each of the five houses, or one that goes between each?
Each of the five houses has a manager, and I believe there's an overall program director, whoever sees all five, who's just up top. But each of the homes has its own manager.
Five separate, independent?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Because I think it was different in the planning commission. I don't, it was stated differently in the planning commission hearing that there were shared resources between the managers going to the five different houses, not five independently operated.
Well, it is required under the code that each group home has a live-in manager. So to that effect, we have, each home does have, in compliance with the code, its own house manager.
You do currently with the three residents?
Right. So it's three residents excluding staff, and one of the staff members is the house Consistent with the code.
Okay. Okay. That's
I don't recall at the planning commission ever saying that each home didn't have its own house manager. But the fact is, it's consistent with the code. Each home definitely does have its own house manager.
Okay. And I believe you said that you had nine, that usually the turnover is nine months or
That's the average, is nine months.
Okay. Did you file a petition, the slide that you showed with the neighbors in agreement with this?
Those, the application for the temporary land use permits comes with a consent form of contiguous landowners, and so we had those folks sign them. And those are the people who are represented on that map.
Okay. I did receive an email this morning that I have, that had a chance to respond to or forward to you of Jennifer Fleming at 1386 Shiloh Trail.
1386.
1326. She said she signed, I'm sorry, 1386.
On the top left.
Right. And she said that she was under the, it was her understanding that this was for one home, not five, and she wanted her name removed. And I think a gentleman spoke. I don't know what his address is, but the gentleman that spoke that said he did not support it, and he was outlined in blue. He can come back up and give us his address. I don't know. Okay. 1374. 1314. No, it wasn't you. It was a man in the green shirt. I'm sorry. Sir, can you give us your name and address one more time? Okay. Did you submit a petition or a signature with this, or is it on the application?
It's, we submitted the consent form to the planning department as part of the application process. It's right there.
Okay. Can you submit that for the record? Because I didn't have that in the record, and the clerk's office didn't have any. You do have it, okay. So that's all the ones that are outlined in blue, with the exception of the ones just mentioned.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Oh, wait. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a few questions for you, sir. Within, I mean, each one of these were standalone land use permits, and I guess, you know, I've been dealing with this off and on as well before the district lines changed. Could you tell me, if you know, how many such homes are there within a five-mile radius of this? Your client?
I have no idea, honestly.
Someone does.
David, do you?
Well, I mean, no, for you, sir.
Oh, for how many sober men living homes?
Correct. So 10?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven total.
Well, we saw eight, there's two in Kennesaw.
4,008 has been closed down, so that's what it's cited.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So, I mean, this is more than just these that we're dealing with, and I assume those others are in compliance. And you mentioned that there's a staff that lives there all the time.
Can you come up?
Come to the microphone, please.
The two on Timberlake, the other two that you saw up there, they're actually for the women's program, so they don't have, they don't service the male population. Just want to be clear about that.
But they're your homes and
Yeah. But they're also in the city of Kennesaw.
I understand that.
Yeah.
That's in Cobb County.
Sure.
Can you state?
We just need your name for the record, sir.
Sure. David Ruby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I was asking, does this, you have one person that lives there every night?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and you have a curfew of 10:30?
Correct.
So, why are people out at midnight talking on phones?
I don't know if that's true.
But you don't know?
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I don't know. I can, I can say a lot of things, you know.
And then, okay. You know, one of your arguments, Mr. Silverboard, was that you want to be treated the same manner as the neighbors across the street, that you have 390 feet per resident, et cetera, et cetera, but that code allows only for two unrelated, so you're not really asked to be treated the same. You want more than the code relies upon for the neighbors across the street. Because all the years are unrelated, correct?
They are unrelated.
And you're allowed to have up to four with
We're asking to have the same total occupancy in the home that would otherwise
But not treated the same, because they're not allowed to have unrelated.
Total occupancy.
From KSU allowed to have unrelated, correct?
Right.
So, so that was a miscorrect statement, you're not asked to be the same. If you want the same, we'll give you the same.
We're asking to have the total occupancy that's allowed to a single family.
Which is also included in unrelated, number of unrelated. That's part of that ordinance. Would you admit to that, sir?
Excuse me, that there's two unrelated in a single family?
That is part of the ordinance.
I would admit that the ordinance for a single-family home allows two unrelated.
No more than two unrelated.
No more than a two unrelated.
So, you're not, in fact, asking for what we're allowed under that code. You're allowing for only the number of people, but filling out
I would ask, say that we're
I'm, I'm just trying to correct what you said as a lawyer, sir.
And I, I'm just saying, the single-family standard, 390 square feet per adult. So, we're asking for the same number of adults, related or unrelated, that would be allowed under the single-family standard for the group homes.
Okay, well
Based on square footage and
No, I understand.
What a family, what a family is allowed. You're, you're not a family, you're unrelated, and you qualify under the group home requirements, or you're, you're set up as a group home. So, you would be allowed, per code, three people plus the manager, live-in manager, or four people and the live-in manager if you had, if you were, if you had sprinklers and were compliant with the code. So, I, I understand where you're going, and I, I, I agree with you, I'm just, he's asking for a group home, which is different requirements than a family.
I understand that, Commissioner, but what he referred back to was the same as what we have in the residential, which is, doesn't allow unrelated.
Right.
You know, and I, I don't think any of us up here dispute what this program does. That's not the issue. And I don't think any of us up here dispute what benefits it has and the necessity for it. What I have concern with is eight, seven in a general vicinity, and it becomes more than a group home, it becomes more of a commercial enterprise, and obviously, that's something we haven't addressed before, because it's never come up before, I don't think. But, you're asking us to make a change, and, you know, I, and, you know, I would be much more inclined to do that if you had a home here and home somewhere else, a home there, but to me, it seems like what you're doing, in my opinion, is coming in and picking off homes and clustering them to save resources, and that completely changes the character of neighborhood at one or even two homes. So, I appreciate you answering my questions, but those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions. The, the counselor that, or the leader that lives there, do they have their own room? So, if you have a four-bedroom house, and you would have seven?
Yeah, typically, they, they would have
So, you would have two folks sharing a room, and then the counselor would have their own room?
Yeah.
Okay. How many of the residents typically have cars or vehicles?
That, I mean, it, it really depends. Not, not every resident has a vehicle. Sometimes they all do. It, it kind of, you know, it, it depends on
Okay, so, while, while we're on the topic of what the code says, okay, there's another section of the code, which addresses congestion in neighborhoods, but more from a safety standpoint, because if you have numerous cars, a lot of these older neighborhoods have narrower streets than the current county standard. And when you have that many folks in a house, driveways are not big enough for all those cars, which forces cars to be parked on the street, which then makes the road inaccessible, which is part of the reason why the whole code was written the way it was, where you address the square footage, where you address the unrelated. It was a safety issue related to, if you get too many people in a house, you get too many cars on the road. And with too many cars on a road on a narrow street, fire equipment cannot get through the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay, and so that, when we talk about all the things with the code, you know, some people say it was because of fraternity houses, other people say it was because of group homes, it came down to a safety issue. Okay, and so, the, the issue here, and I understand where Commissioner Weatherford was going, but the real issue here, because I was here when we wrote this code, and the code is about safety. And it is safety in the neighborhood, and the issue is, we do not have the code enforcement personnel that can come out every single day and make sure that the car's not in the street or parked on the grass. And, so, I just want to make sure that we make it clear that a lot of these codes, and we can sit here and nitpick about the square footage and everything else, but it was, it was about safety. And the vehicles really parking on the street were the main issue. And so, what the county looked at was various different ways to make it clear on how to define what was equal treatment. And it doesn't, you know, unrelated, related, you know, you're asking for the same thing as a single-family home would have. A single-family home with a husband, a wife, and two children doesn't have four cars. And so, I just want to kind of make that point, and I have some other comments when Commissioner
Can I just respond to your? We did agree to a stipulation that there would be parking in the driveway and the garage only, and only the number of cars that could fit into that space would be allowed at each house. So, there'd be no, there'd be no off-speed parking.
Right, but the problem is, if the person who is parked in the garage wants to leave, that means everybody's got to come out, move their cars around, get in the street, out of the street, back in the driveway. So, it becomes problematic.
Commissioner Cuban?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to acknowledge that you had a very robust presentation, and I tried to take as many notes as I could from it. Did you send that to the commissioners?
The presentation?
The presentation. Did you email it to us?
The, the PowerPoint, I don't think I'd have
Would you be willing to do that?
Of course.
Okay, 'cause, again, I tried to take down some notes as you were sharing a lot of substantive information, but just couldn't follow all of it in some of the comments that you shared. I might have some clarifying questions, and I apologize if they've been asked before, but I'm just trying to understand some things that were asked. How long has your program been operating, Silverman Living? And then, how long has the other program, I can't recall the term of it?
Hero House?
Hero House, can you provide the start date?
As far as I know, Hero House was operating in the neighborhood since 2007, maybe earlier than that.
2007.
For a while.
And it had the two homes that were there?
And there were two homes, and I think we acquired those homes in, I want to say, early 2015. I have it on a slide somewhere, but it's around December 2014, early 2015.
Okay, thank you. And then, Silverman Living, when did it start operating, just in Cobb County? I'm asking that, 'cause I'm trying to understand the statistic that you provided, that the program has treated over 120 persons. Has that all been here in Cobb County, and has it been within the seven, eight, excuse me, the seven homes that you identified?
David?
Yeah, so, we do have some homes in Cherokee County as well.
Oh, in Cherokee?
Yeah.
Okay, so that hasn't all been here in Cobb County?
That's correct.
Okay, how many homes do you have in Cherokee?
In Cherokee County? We have three homes in Cherokee.
Three homes in Cherokee. Are they similarly situated, or are they in the same community?
Yes, two of them are in the same community, and one of them is not.
So, you have three homes in Cherokee, and then you said seven other ones here?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we also have homes in Nashville, Tennessee as well.
Oh, and, okay. So, when you provide that statistic, are you referring to all of them nationally, even the ones outside of Georgia?
That's right.
Okay. You've been asked a lot of questions with respect to staff, and I'm trying to better understand how staff is coming in and out and how they're servicing the area. You provided that each home has a supervisor, and I noticed from a slide, it said 24/7 supervision. Is that the same supervisor that provides that 24/7 supervision? Or is that multiple supervisors coming in and out of the home?
My understanding is the same supervisor, who's devoted, who lives at the house, who's devoted to those residents. And then occasionally, a supervisor, if he has to, she, he, or she, sorry, he, would need to go run an errand, or else take a resident to therapy, would ask another supervisor to step in if necessary, but that rarely happens. So, what we're talking about really is running errands for the homes.
Okay, and
But each home has its own dedicated 24/7 resident supervisor.
Okay, 'cause I would parse that out a little bit to understand.
Yeah.
If, I, I presume that appointments are probably regular for the population that you have, so there would be frequent trips in and out of the home to appointments. So, there was some question about some shared resources, and to me, just hearing that there's one supervisor in the home, begs how many other people, people are coming in and out of the home. So, you know, what I'm trying to, perhaps another question I'm trying to get to is, there is a live-in, there's a live-in supervisor, but I'm wondering, is there support staff? Are there other support entities that are coming in and out of each home to provide services?
Yeah, so we have live-in, I, I probably can answer this better.
Okay, thank you.
So, there's live-in support staff, and then we have an overall program manager. So, you have the support staff that sleeps there at night.
Okay.
And then we have, as recovery coaches, essentially, as some of the presentations have alluded to, kind of mentoring and guiding, and they also provide transportation during the day to and fro, you know, to and from appointments for residents.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where that comes in.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would be the shared resources.
Okay.
If that, hopefully, that clarifies.
Yes, it, yes. Let me see if I have any additional questions. I know a motion hasn't been made yet, and so
No, and I still have some more comments.
Yeah, so, I, I'll hold some of my other questions for when that motion is made. I just wanted to at least get some understanding of some of those technical aspects. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I do have another technical question. What is the age range of the persons in your home?
18 to 25.
18 to 25. So, they're just affectionately referred to as kids, 'cause I heard
Young adults.
They're young, okay.
I, I do have one more question before I finish my comments, since y'all are up at the podium. With the, the staff or manager that lives there as well, you have one for each of the five houses in Pine Tree, but what about the two that are in the city limits of Kennesaw?
We have, this is, yeah, we have
They each have their own live-in?
Female house manager, because those are for the women's program. Yeah, that's correct.
But they have their own separate?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have for these two gentlemen, unless y'all have anything else. Y'all?
Thank you, Chairman, this is less technical, but it's an observation that I'm going to ask for maybe more of a practical response. When the residents came up and spoke about Silverman living in the community, they came across as being conciliatory, as understanding that there is a helpful service that's being provided, and recognizing the value of that service that people, that people are recovering from addiction through your program. Whether or not they agree with the means of it, again, I think it's been shared that they understand the veracity of, of what you're trying to do. What I didn't hear from you, and what I'd like to hear from you, is you being conciliatory towards the residents. How are you recognizing the impact of this program on them? What conditions or thought have you put in place to recognize the unique impact? Not that's legally required, but from a practical perspective, because, I'm asking from a practical perspective, because even if, regardless, regardless of how this zoning is determined, you're in this neighbor, the program is in this neighborhood, and you're neighbors, and I'm not hearing anything that recognizes there is a unique impact in this community. And I just am curious to know what conditions you may have provided, what stipulations you provide to ensure that there is going to be a reasonable living relationship with those that are in the community.
Well, I think in terms of actual impacts with the, the accommodation we're talking about, you know, parking and traffic, we have offered a stipulation to that, to keep parking, to car, the number of cars limited to those that can fit in the garage and the driveway. I mean, I do understand that parking and traffic has been an issue in this neighborhood, given its proximity to Kennesaw State, and I think one of the streets is used as a cut-through. So, we have stipulated to limit the number of cars in each home. I would tell you that Silverman Living is absolutely committed to working with the neighbors to address their concerns. And I would also tell you that I tried to reach out to the Pine Trees Association before this, months, months ago, to try to work with them, to see what their concerns were, what conditions we could offer, and I was greeted with silence. We have tried, and we're still willing, absolutely still willing, to work with them, the neighbors, to address their concerns.
Since the planning commission, when these same issues were brought up in a two-week period?
Oh, we, we offered, and we were not able to meet with them.
Okay. I, I just have a few more comments, and then, with further discussion or not, I will make a motion. Y'all can sit down, unless there's other questions. I do feel that with the several, several homes, in this case, five, and then, or seven, in the, in the area, One Street, Five and One Street, so close together, does create an institutionalized setting in this community as opposed to a deinstitutionalized, long-term, family-like environment. Preserving the character of a neighborhood is a well-recognized interest of local government, and I think the clustering of group homes, as evidenced in this case, does impact the character of this neighborhood. And the, the spirit of our code is not to provide for clustering of, of group homes. Just as a bit of history, in 2008, the BOC denied two requests to increase the number of adults from two homes in the Pine Tree subdivision, up seven and eight. And then in 2015, in the same subdivision, the BOC denied a request to increase the number of unrelated adults in a home, and that was for student housing. I've also received several emails from neighbors and residents, mostly in Pine Tree, opposing this land use permit for the five homes. And I think at the planning commission, we had fif, was it 54 in opposition? At the planning commission, and today, we've had 39 in opposition. And we're not opposed to group homes. I mean, that's why we instituted a code for those with the three or four adults. But we are protective of Cobb's single-family neighborhoods, and make decisions in keeping with the family-friendly expectations of the citizens in those neighborhoods. Today, we have the presence of fi, of five clustered homes that have changed the character of the surrounding properties in regards to safety, health, and welfare. the surrounding properties in regards to safety, health, and welfare. The character of the neighborhood has been impacted and fundamentally changed, the intent of the underlying zoning classification. Dana Johnson, our community development director is here, and he may be able to come up and kind of explain the history with the Hero Houses and what we've done in the past.
Commissioner Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I think the question you were asking me was the history of the current group home regulations. Is that what your intention was, Commissioner?
Yes.
The current regulations for group home were written due to a settlement of a lawsuit that occurred with Hero House that were approved by HUD. That kind of set the framework for ordinance as it currently is today.
So what did you just say?
Well, what I'm saying is that.
I wanted to ask that question, too.
Our existing regulatory framework is compliance, is compliant with what HUD sees as an appropriate guidance on how to handle group homes in a community.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid. Yeah, my question is, is there a limitation to the number of group homes you can put in an area there based on this HUD guideline? Or just addresses individual homes per se?
I think Commissioner, I can clear.
Well, I'd like to have, I'd like to have, you know, Dana Johnson answer that question.
This is a legal issue that I would really look to our counselor to.
Let's talk about it then. What's, you see what I'm talking about here, right? The trend, the issue that Commissioner brought up, here, Commissioner Barrell brought up, is there's this migration from one intent of a neighborhood to another by the nature of approving the slups. All right? So, and because dealing with group homes, has the HUD addressed that issue as you approve more of these group homes, and it changes the character of the neighborhood? Was that addressed by the legislation, or is that not a concern?
What HUD addresses, it's under the Fair Housing Act, and you can't discriminate in housing to, the way the law is written, recovering addicts are considered disabled or handicapped. And so you can't discriminate under the law by, you know, you can't discriminate against a handicapped person in their choice of housing. So they does, it doesn't go so far as to say it has to have so many people, or there's a distance limitation, or anything like that. Our code governs that whole process. And as we've talked about over and over, three to four is allowed under our code. There is no proximity requirement in our code. And the way we grant a reasonable accommodation is through this process, the temporary land use permit. So, you know, and however the board considers that, you know, if it's, we're talking about, or y'all are talking about different things as far as traffic and things like that, but the number would be at your discretion. Is that responsive?
Thank you, Chairman. Your explanation helped address the question I had. Thank you.
All right, maybe I could help a little bit here. I was here when we had to write the code over various things. The best comparison I can give you is Section 8 housing. When HUD decided to move Section 8 eligible people out of the projects and into the neighborhoods, this is when this whole concept came up of not being able to deny any individual the right to live in a home. All right? And so the first instance we saw was Section 8 housing moving into the neighborhoods. Like, for example, Marietta Housing, when they, someone is eligible for Section 8 housing, they see how many kids they have, you know, what the family content is, and they tell them how many bedroom house they're eligible for. Then they go out into a neighborhood, and it doesn't matter where it is, anywhere in the county, and they find a house that is eligible based on the requirements that Marietta Housing has told them. Well, what came out of that further on is for folks with disabilities, whether it be addiction or whatever the disabilities are, the same rules have to apply. That they can be allowed to live in any neighborhood that they choose, provided that the other requirements are met. Well, the issue that came up was then, and it was referred to as fraternity houses, and like I said before, and what the county opted was to look at it from the safety perspective, not denying the Section 8 homes or the folks that have disabilities the ability to live more than one person in a house. But the issue was, let's make sure the square footage is adequate. And so we went to the standards on that. Then it was the issue of parking. Okay? Because you can't have the vehicles on the road because it interfered with the life safety, the fire engines, and other rescue equipment being able to get into a neighborhood. So all of those things went into, and then looked at the unrelated also, because that contributed to the cars and some of the other things. So when Debbie and Dana talked about it, it's kind of an all-encompassing, it took a while to get to where we are today, and it's not any one part of the code that necessarily, it's the whole package. And it all kind of started when HUD wanted, because there is much better success, especially with Section 8 housing, where if you put a family into a neighborhood, instead of having them in a project. And so then it just carries over. And so, as Debbie said, the land use permit gives the county the opportunity to look at an individual case-by-case basis. Is if you allow eight folks in this home, in this neighborhood, is it going to be burdensome based on those other criteria? And I think the issue here is the fact that any one of these individual homes is doing a tremendous service, and by itself would not be burdensome on the neighborhood. But when you put five of them, because I'm sure every one of us lives in a neighborhood where there are businesses. Okay? But they're not an impact because they're not right next to each other, and they're not all having deliveries. I think in this particular case, the issue is not about reason, you know, the reasonableness and all that. This is the fact that you have five concentrated on one street right next to each other. And I think that's really where the issue is here. But as to the code, I mean, there was a lot of different things that went into it.
But just to be clear, they could come and apply for another permit for another house, and they, you know, given they meet the conditions of the law, they could, you know, create another group home in that house, they could actually put group homes throughout this whole neighborhood. And there's nothing in the law that prevents them from doing that, as far as I can see.
That's correct. In our residential zoning classifications, group homes are permitted uses at the numbers that are limited in our code, which is the three or four.
Four, if it's sprinkled. Yes, sir.
And just to comment on yours, the business aspect, it is a business, and it is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and five, five close together. So, and we do allow, code does allow for the additional unrelated persons in group homes over and above our two unrelated adults in our single-family home dwelling code. And, but these homes, this has created an institutionalized setting within the neighborhood. And the character has been impacted by these five properties and their requests for further expansion. The planning commission and staff comments have both denied, recommended denial on these land use permits as well. So I'm ready to make a motion, and I need to do it for each one individually, and for the number of increased unrelated adults, over and above what the code allows, is what I'm.
The land use permit is for the number of adults before us.
Correct. Okay.
But be a motion for each one?
Correct.
We'll vote on each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, my first motion is to deny zoning request LUP 29.
Second, do I hear any discussion? And we have a discussion.
Yes. I just want to make some comments to address all of the slups, so I'm not going to make the same comment. I would like to underscore Commissioner Barrell's comments about the character of the community, but really tie in more to her reference to health, safety, and welfare, which I think is a known legal tenet with respect to our protection of the communities, is that the community has pointed out their vulnerability as far as the safety perspective is concerned, and the welfare of the community. With respect to safety, the number of people who are transient in the community, walking to and through the neighborhood who are not known, and their concern about their children walking amongst them. I also want to specifically address the welfare of residents, where you have residents who can't quietly enjoy their property because of the activity that's going on at certain times of the night, the welfare of the community that's being changed by people traversing the yards from behind, and not the same typical way that a family would coming out the front door. The welfare of their single-family community has been altered. So I just want to underscore the examples that you have under each of those points, in case that's legally.
Thank you.
Questioned. And I support the rest of your motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Do I hear any further discussion? And I call a question. And passes five to zero.
I'd also like to make a motion to deny land use permit number 30.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
I would like to make a motion to deny land use permit number 31.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
And a motion to deny land use permit number 32.
Any discussion? I call a question. Passes five to zero.
And one more. A motion to deny land use permit number 33.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. I need to talk to Commissioners for one second. All right, Tom? John, we're going to take a recess for half an hour. And the reason we're doing this is that at 2:00, we have a ceremony for a longstanding servant here, the county's retiring at 2:00. So we're going to take a break till 12:15, then come back and work till 2:00, and then take the break for the ceremony, and then come back if we have any unfinished business after that, okay? All right? So appreciate your understanding.
Welcome back from recess. We have, I'd like to bring the attentions to a board, the board's attention to an administrative correction we'd like to make, John?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one amend motion that needs to be made pursuant to other business item number five. The wrong date was put on the agenda. The correct date on the site plan should be, the site plan received January 17, 2017, with the district commission approval of minor modifications and all the other things that the board approved this morning. So we would ask the board to consider that amendment and make that amendment to the minutes.
And I'd like to make a motion to amend as stated. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to be do, back to you, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Board, it's my understanding that the applicant for Z6 has cleaned up all the conditions, and we could probably add that to the consent agenda. Let me go ahead and read it into the record real quick.
Sure.
Res zoning case Z6, Siisum Pat Mill LLC requests a rezoning from GCR12 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store of fuel sales and retail in Land Lot 132 of the 17th District. Property is located at the southeast corner of Pat Mill Road and Vable Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams, the Law Firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally. And this is a case that was on the consent agenda with the Planning Commission. Two gentlemen who were interested showed up and expressed some issues. We've been able to address and resolve those issues. In addition to that, Commissioner Cupid and I were able to exchange emails over the weekend. So in addition to my revised stipulation letter of February 15, Commissioner Cupid has asked that we agree to several others, if I may read those into the record. Commissioner Cupid would also like for us to formulate a no loitering policy, so it would place the police department in a position to be able to enforce that as a condition of stipulation of zoning. We're agreeable to that. She would like to see hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, as opposed to 24/7, which is fine with us as well. And then, the Planning Commission added a stipulation there'd be no pouring of alcohol. They made specific reference to a restaurant, but I think Commissioner Cupid wants that extended to whatever other kind of establishment is there as well. So those are the three additional. In addition to my February 15 letter, which incorporate all the Planning Commission's recommendations, and of course, your staff has recommended approval. So we would ask that it be placed back on the consent agenda, if that's acceptable to the Chairman and Commissioner Cupid.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cupid.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Garvis, for reading that in. I am supportive of the stipulations that he'd presented and support it being agreed upon in a motion for consent. I don't know if we have to do another motion? Okay.
Second. And we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to be do, back to you, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Board, it's my understanding that the applicant for Z6 has cleaned up all the conditions, and we could probably add that to the consent agenda. Let me go ahead and read it into the record real quick.
Sure.
Res zoning case Z6, Siisum Pat Mill LLC requests a rezoning from GCR12 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store of fuel sales and retail in Land Lot 132 of the 17th District. Property is located at the southeast corner of Pat Mill Road and Vable Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, the Law Firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally. And this is a case that was on the consent agenda with the Planning Commission. Two gentlemen who were interested showed up and expressed some issues. We've been able to address and resolve those issues. In addition to that, Commissioner Cupid and I were able to exchange emails over the weekend. So in addition to my revised stipulation letter of February 15, Commissioner Cupid has asked that we agree to several others, if I may read those into the record. Commissioner Cupid would also like for us to formulate a no loitering policy, so it would place the police department in a position to be able to enforce that as a condition of stipulation of zoning. We're agreeable to that. She would like to see hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, as opposed to 24/7, which is fine with us as well. And then, the Planning Commission added a stipulation there'd be no pouring of alcohol. They made specific reference to a restaurant, but I think Commissioner Cupid wants that extended to whatever other kind of establishment is there as well. So those are the three additional. In addition to my February 15 letter, which incorporate all the Planning Commission's recommendations, and of course, your staff has recommended approval. So we would ask that it be placed back on the consent agenda, if that's acceptable to the Chairman and Commissioner Cupid.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cupid.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Garvis, for reading that in. I am supportive of the stipulations that he'd presented and support it being agreed upon in a motion for consent. I don't know if we have to do another motion? Okay.
Second. And we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Board, the applicant for Z2 has asked me to see if the board will be willing to continue his case. He doesn't speak very good English, and he wants someone here who could help him interpret better. So that's up to the board to decide that or not.
Out of, excuse me. Out of fairness, I think that's appropriate. Hablo español un poquito, no muchos, pero necesito una otra. How do you say, how do you say meeting? My concern is more of an administrative matter, so I was going to ask staff to provide some input, but we can continue if you're okay with that, sir. That's fine. I don't want you to feel, I can't even interpret. I know Commissioner Ox speaks Spanish, but I don't want you to be at a disadvantage.
Well, I can do English talk, you know, but I can do lawyer talk. I mean, that's my point. I mean, I can go like...
No, no, no. Bad move.
The simpler the better for me.
Yo deseo tu entiendes.
Ah, sí.
Pero es mejor que nosotros esperamos.
So it's better for me to give somebody to represent me? It is better?
No, no, no. I want to say there's not really a dispute. There's not really a big, no, no, it's, no es un...
It's not a big issue?
No, no, es una problema mejor. Es un poquito, pero yo deseo hablar con la problema. So, yes, let's, let's, let's talk later. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, yes, I'm okay with continuing to march.
We just get motion for that there.
Okay. With, with an interpreter. Yes. I move that we, I move that we hear zoning case Z2 in, in March with an interpreter present, if this is not on the consent agenda. I will not be here in March as for the board.
Well, I can understand what you guys saying, but I don't understand, I mean, how my case from CF to R15 has to be changed, because the house was bought residential. Taxes are paying residential.
I may with, because somebody, I don't know if I should discuss. I put a motion out there. I want to respond to it.
Yeah, we'll make the motion. We'll second it. And then we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
So we have a second. You have a motion to continue. We have a second.
Okay. Sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that you can understand me. My concern?
Yes.
Is not necessarily with you wanting to have the property be residential, because you have a home there. This helps to clean up the zoning so that you can have the home there. I'm concerned about one stipulation on the property, which has been an ongoing issue within the district. That's regarding the paving of the driveway.
Okay.
And I recognize that there are a lot of other homes in the community.
They don't have driveways.
Exactly.
Mine's partial, because the front of the house is not complete.
Exactly. But the thing is, we've had...
Will you guys give me time to come up with the money? I can do it, but I can do it like next month.
I'm not going to ask you to do it, yes. And that could be a compromise. I mean, I'm even willing to give you a year, considering the condition of the other properties, but I just don't want to be unfair to give a variance for that when others may come under code enforcement for the same thing.
I think we talked about it, right? We had a meeting, and then we walked it through. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine to do it, but like I said, you give me the year, a year to get the money and get it done.
Excellent. We'll put it in a stipulation then. And this was on the consent agenda. I just had the issue with that stipulation right there. So if you're willing, I can withdraw the motion, and then we can, okay, wonderful. And that will get us out of here even sooner. Excellent.
And the carport, I had a letter.
The carport is just fine.
It's fine?
Just fine. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I move to withdraw the motion to continue Z2.
All in favor? Can we call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay. I move to...
So, can I sit down?
Okay, I guess we didn't have to...
Sure. Okay. I'm not familiar with this stuff, because I've never been to court or anything like that. It was like...
I don't know. Oh, okay. I don't even know what I'm supposed to say right now. Okay.
Make the motion to approve it all. He isn't an adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank God John is here. I move to support Z2 to the R15 zoning category, subject to Planning Commissioner comments, Staff Commissioner comments, not otherwise in conflict, and with the addition of a stipulation that the driveway be paved within 12 months of approval of this zoning.
Second. Any questions? Any discussions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to be do, back to you, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Board, it's my understanding that the applicant for Z6 has cleaned up all the conditions, and we could probably add that to the consent agenda. Let me go ahead and read it into the record real quick.
Sure.
Res zoning case Z6, Siisum Pat Mill LLC requests a rezoning from GCR12 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store of fuel sales and retail in Land Lot 132 of the 17th District. Property is located at the southeast corner of Pat Mill Road and Vable Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, the Law Firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally. And this is a case that was on the consent agenda with the Planning Commission. Two gentlemen who were interested showed up and expressed some, some issues. We've been able to address and resolve those issues. In addition to that, Commissioner Cupid and I were able to exchange emails over the weekend. So in addition to my revised stipulation letter of February 15, Commissioner Cupid has asked that we agree to several others, if I may read those into the record. Commissioner Cupid would also like for us to formulate a no loitering policy, so it would place the police department in a position to be able to enforce that as a condition of stipulation of zoning. We're agreeable to that. She would like to see hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, as opposed to 24/7, which is fine with us as well. And then, the Planning Commission added a stipulation there'd be no pouring of alcohol. They made specific reference to a restaurant, but I think Commissioner Cupid wants that extended to whatever other kind of establishment is there as well. So those are the three additional. In addition to my February 15 letter, which incorporate all the Planning Commission's recommendations, and of course, your staff has recommended approval. So we would ask that it be placed back on the consent agenda, if that's acceptable to the Chairman and Commissioner Cupid.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cupid.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Garvis, for reading that in. I am supportive of the stipulations that he'd presented and support it being, being agreed upon in a motion for consent. I don't know if we have to do another motion? Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Board, the applicant for Z2 has asked me to see if the board will be willing to continue his case. He doesn't speak very good English, and he wants someone here who could help him interpret better. So that's up to the board to decide that or not.
Out of, excuse me. Out of fairness, I think that's appropriate. Hablo español un poquito, no muchos, pero necesito una otra. How do you say, how do you say meeting? My concern is more of an administrative matter, so I was going to ask staff to provide some input, but we can continue if you're okay with that, sir. That's fine. I don't want you to feel, I can't even interpret. I know Commissioner Ox speaks Spanish, but I don't want you to be at a disadvantage.
Well, I can do English talk, you know, but I can do lawyer talk. I mean, that's my point. I mean, I can go like...
No, no, no. Bad move.
The simpler the better for me. I mean...
Yo deseo tu entiendes.
Ah, sí.
Pero es mejor que nosotros esperamos.
So it's better for me to give somebody to represent me? It is better?
No, no, no. I want to say there's not really a dispute. There's not really a big, no, no, it's, no es un...
It's not a big issue?
No, no, es una problema mejor. Es un poquito, pero yo deseo hablar con la problema. So, yes, let's, let's, let's talk later. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, yes, I'm, I'm okay with continuing to march.
We just get motion for that there.
Okay. With, with an interpreter. Yes. I move that we, I move that we hear zoning case Z2 in, in March with an interpreter present, if this is not on the consent agenda. I will not be here in March as for the board.
Well, I can understand what you guys saying, but I don't understand, I mean, how my case from CF to R15 has to be changed, because the house was bought residential.
Yes.
Taxes are paying residential.
I may with, because somebody, I don't know if I should discuss. I put a motion out there. I want to respond to it.
Yeah, we'll make the motion. We'll second it. And then we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
So we have a second. You have a motion to continue. We have a second.
Okay. Sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that you can understand me. My concern?
Yes.
Is not necessarily with you wanting to have the property be residential, because you have a home there.
Yes.
This helps to clean up the zoning so that you can have the home there. I'm concerned about one stipulation on the property, which has been an ongoing issue within the district. That's regarding the paving of the driveway.
Okay.
And I recognize that there are a lot of other homes in the community.
They don't have driveways.
Exactly.
Mine's partial, because the front of the house is not complete.
Exactly. But the thing is, we've had...
Will you guys give me time to come up with the money? I can do it, but I can do it like next month.
I'm not going to ask you to do it, yes. And that could be a compromise. I mean, I'm even willing to give you a year, considering the condition of the other properties, but I just don't want to be unfair to give a variance for that when others may come under code enforcement for the same thing.
I think we talked about it, right? We had a meeting, and then we walked it through. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine to do it, but like I said, you give me the year, a year to get the money and get it done.
Excellent. We'll put it in a stipulation then. And this was on the consent agenda. I just had the issue with that stipulation right there. So if you're willing, I can withdraw the motion, and then we can, okay, wonderful. And that will get us out of here even sooner. Excellent.
And the carport, I had a letter.
The carport is just fine.
It's fine?
Just fine. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I move to withdraw the motion to continue Z2.
All in favor? Can we call a question? Passes five to zero.
Now, and can I step forward?
Okay. I move to...
So, can I sit down?
Okay, I guess we didn't have to...
Sure. Okay. I'm not familiar with this stuff, because I've never been to court or anything like that. It was like...
I don't know.
It's okay.
Oh, okay. I don't even know what I'm supposed to say right now.
Make the motion to approve it all.
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank God John is here. I move to support Z2 to the R15 zoning category, subject to Planning Commissioner comments, Staff Commissioner comments, not otherwise in conflict, and with the addition of a stipulation that the driveway be paved within 12 months of approval of this zoning.
Second. Any question? Any discussions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
You're good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John.
I want to hear yours.
Yes, with the 12, I said 12 months.
Got it.
All right. Moving on. Res zoning case Z3, RJASANI ENT LLC, requests rezoning from R20 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience market with fuel sales and a restaurant use in Land Lot 352 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Atlanta Road and Old Concord Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z3? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
This, this was recommended for consent from the Planning Commission. It was pulled off consent at the Planning Commission because there was one lady in opposition. She is not here today. I have spoken with her, and I have spoken with the applicant's attorney, and he has agreed upon additional stipulations that will help improve the area.
Out of, excuse me. Out of fairness, I think that's appropriate. Hablo español un poquito, no muchos, pero necesito una otra. How do you say, how do you say meaning? My concern is more of an administrative matter, so I was going to ask staff to provide some input, but we can continue if you're okay with that, sir. That's fine. I don't want you to feel, I can't even interpret. I know Commissioner Ox speaks Spanish, but I don't want you to be at a disadvantage.
Well, I can do English talk, you know, but I can do lawyer talk. I mean, that's my point. I mean, I can go like...
No, no, no. Bad move.
The simpler the better for me. I mean...
Yo deseo to entiendes, pero es mejor que nosotros esperamos.
So if it's better for me to get somebody to represent me, it is better?
No, no, no. I want to say there's not really a dispute. There's not really a big, no, no, no es un...
It's not a big issue?
No, no, no es una problema. Mejor es un poquito, pero yo deseo hablar con la problema. So, yes, let's, let's, let's talk later. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, yes, I'm okay with continuing to march.
We just get motion for that then.
Okay. With, with an interpreter. Yes. I move that we, I move that we hear zoning case Z2 in, in March with an interpreter present, if this is not on the consent agenda. I will not be here in March as for the board.
Well, I can understand what you guys saying, but I don't understand, I mean, how my case from CF to R15 has to be changed, because the house was bought residential, taxes are paying residential.
I mean, with, because somebody, I don't know if I should discuss. I put a motion out there. I want to respond to it.
Yeah, we'll make the motion. We'll second it. I feel like we have discussion.
Okay.
So we have a second. We have a motion to continue. We have a second. No discussion.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that you can understand me. My concern
Yes.
is not necessarily with you wanting to have the property be residential, because you have a home there.
Yes.
This helps to clean up the zoning so that you can have the home there. I'm concerned about one stipulation on the property, which has been an ongoing issue within the district. That's regarding the paving of the driveway.
Okay.
And I recognize that there are a lot of other homes in the community.
They don't have driveways.
Exactly.
Mine's partial, because the front of the house is not complete.
Exactly. But the thing is, we've had...
Well, you guys give me time to come up with the money. I can do it, but I can do it like next month, you know?
I'm not going to ask you to do it. Yes. And that could be a compromise. I mean, I'm even willing to give you a year, considering
All right, that's fine. That's perfect.
the condition of the other properties, but I just don't want to be unfair to give you a variance for that when others may come under code enforcement for the same thing and they're right next to...
I think we talked about it, right? We had a meeting, and then we walked it through. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine to do it, but like I said, you give me the year, a year to get the money and get it done.
Excellent. We'll put it in a stipulation then. And this was on the consent agenda. I just had the issue with that stipulation right there. So if you're willing, I can withdraw the motion.
Withdraw, sure.
And then we can, okay, wonderful. And that will get us out of here even sooner. Excellent.
And the carport, I had a letter.
The carport is just fine.
It's fine?
Just fine. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I move to withdraw the motion to continue Z2.
All in favor? Can we call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay. I move to...
So, can I sit down or?
We didn't vote. Okay, I guess we didn't have to.
Sure. Okay. I'm not familiar with this stuff, because I've never been to court or anything like that. You know, so I'll be like...
I don't know. Oh, okay. I don't even know what I'm supposed to say right now. Okay.
Make the motion to approve it. All these and add your case.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank God John is here. I move to support Z2 to the R15 zoning category, subject to planning commissioner comments, staff commissioner comments not otherwise in conflict, and with the addition of a stipulation that the driveway be paved within 12 months of approval of this zoning.
Second.
Any questions, any discussions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, guys.
I want to hear yours.
Yes, with the 12, I said 12 months.
Got it. All right. Moving on. Res zoning case Z3, R Desani ENT LLC, request rezoning from R20 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience market with fuel sales and a restaurant use in Land Lot 352 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Atlanta Road and Old Concord Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z3? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
This, this was recommended for consent from the planning commission. It was pulled off consent at the planning commission because there was one lady in opposition. She is not here today. I have spoken with her, and I have spoken with the applicant's attorney, and he has agreed upon additional stipulations that will help improve the area. So, are you still going to make a presentation, or do we need to?
That's correct, Commissioner Adam Rosen, Sams, Larkin, Huffin, Valley, behalf of the applicant Z3. We are agreeable to the additional conditions that we've discussed and do not have any further presentation at this time.
Okay. So, I'm prepared to make a motion, and I will include those stipulations, additional stips. But the motion is to approve Z3 and delete it to TS, not NRC, as requested.
Okay. That's correct.
And a couple of, a few stipulations that I would like to add to the stip letter and site plan dated 2/21/17. Are you submitting the site plan with the points of access for the security cameras today?
I have a copy of that today and can submit it for the record.
I'd like for you to submit that for the record, and that will show the points of security cameras over the property. So that site plan, in addition to the original site plan dated 2/17, will be submitted. There is to be a write-in, write-out only at the first entrance on Old Concord, closest to Atlanta Road. The dumpster is to be enclosed and in compliance with the service hours in Cobb County. No loitering signs will be posted on the property. All signage to meet county code. A six-foot privacy fence along the property line adjoining the neighbors on the Old Concord to the back property line on Old Concord to Atlanta Road.
The applicant is agreeable to that as well, yes, ma'am.
Right. And outdoor seating to be allowed in lieu of two parking spaces in the front of the, of the building. And final approval, if that comes forward, would be approved by the district commissioner. The final landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist and district commissioner, and all other staff and planning commission comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
I have a second. Do I have further discussion? Call a question. It carries five to zero.
And thank you, Mr. Rosen and your client, for working with us on these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Murrell. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Board, it's my understanding that the last item on your agenda, other business item number three, can be added to consent. Also, all issues that have been worked out. I'm going to go ahead and read that in, and we'll call the applicant forward. Other business item number three is to consider many of the stipulations and provide clarification for Venture Homes Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z45 of 2005 for property located on the south side of Anderson Mill Road, east side of Austin Road, and on the west side of Cherly Drive, Land Lots 993, 994, and 1005 of the 19th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number three? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Sean Randall, Senior Vice President of Venture Homes, and I want to take just a minute to say something to Chairman Bice. We're proud to be a part of this community for over 30 years, building homes in Cobb County, and we welcome you to the board. And if there's anything we can ever do to be of assistance, please don't hesitate to call us.
Could you bring a Spanish interpreter?
No, I did not, but I did want to talk to you about the rampant inflation that's taking place in the county, and I hope you can take care of it, because I can remember riding my bike to the Strand Theater when I was a kid, and my allowance, so my economic benefit has always been tied to Cobb County. My allowance was exactly 75 cents, because that was the price of a ticket, a small Coca-Cola, and a bag of popcorn.
Well, welcome to 2017.
Yeah. Now, Commissioner, I tell you, I go to any movie theater in Cobb County, I put my 75 cents on the counter, and they say, dude, get your credit card out. So, anyway, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're very glad to be here. We've got, I'll be very, very brief. We've got a pipe farm that we'd like to turn into a nice residential community. It's currently 46 zoned units, eight units are owned or occupied. And basically, I've sent a letter of stipulations to Commissioner Cupid and other members of the, of the county staff, you know, outlining what we're willing to do. There were two minor changes that the residents have asked for, and I've agreed to, and I'd like to read those into the record as follows. Stipulation number three on page two, Venture will agree to construct houses of no less than 1,820 heated and cooled square feet, which was obviously the venture intent of that stipulation in number three paragraph. We still want to reserve the right to increase the heated and cooled square feet up to 2,400 or more heater and cooled square feet. Stipulation four on page two, Venture will delete and amend the fifth sentence in that stipulation, so as to read as follows. Site elevations on the two exterior sides of each townhome building must include no less than 36 inches of masonry, brick, stone, stack stone, or any combination thereof is measured upward from the exterior wall, from the poured concrete slab foundation. The remaining side and rear elevations may also utilize masonry, brick, stone, stack stone, or any combination thereof, as well as stucco cement fiber board and battened cement lap siding, cement shake or cedar shake shingles, combination thereof, in keeping with the appropriate style and use of such products on the front elevations. The remaining sections of stipulation number four, first paragraph, shall remain unchanged, and we'd also request that the third paragraph of the stipulation number four be deleted in its entirety. So, this, this project will be adding about seven and a half to eight million dollars of property values to the tax roll, but more importantly, it'll be getting rid of a pipe farm that has sat basically dormant since 2006. We've had great support from the existing homeowners there. We've been back and forth, and I think we've addressed all their concerns, and we're going to do some things to spruce up the existing houses as well as the new homes. So, we're very excited about this opportunity, and we'd ask for your support.
Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I do support this application and want to share that there was a community meeting that took place recently, and a couple of the residents who were part of the board were here today. And after they were able to reach resolution last night, they came here as a sign of good faith to show me that the community was in agreement. So I feel comfortable moving forward with this being on consent. I don't want anybody to think we tried anything funny by moving this on the agenda. With that, I support, with that, I move that we approve other business item number three to amend the stipulations and provide clarification for Venture Homes with respect to zoning application 45 of 2005, with addition of the stipulations added per Sean Randall, without changing any other existing stipulations that are on the property. All other staff comments to remain in effect with respect to this property that are not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I complete your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I, I'm adjourning this, this session as the committee's zoning hearing for February 21st, 2017. Thank you, John.
Good job.